Anybody has a public comment? Please take it over to Darby before we start.
I'd like to call to order this Monday night, November the first, Planning Commission. Obviously, we did not have it last Wednesday, the 27th, due to power outage at the town, so we are reconvening tonight. Darby, may we have a roll call, please?
When I call your name, please stay here or present for the record. Amanda Jackson Denmark?
Here.
Carly Wetmore?
Here.
Kathleen Duncan?
Here.
Jason Stewart?
Here.
Matt Yost?
Here.
Ron Williams. Thank you.
A notice regarding adjournment. The Planning Commission will not hear new items after 9:30 unless authorized by a majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular meeting or a special meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments. Every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall address the chairman and in speaking avoid disrespect to the commission staff or other members of the meeting. You will need to state your name and address, and when speaking for the record, comments are limited to three minutes. And please, everyone, there's a lot of public comments tonight. If there's a comment that's already been said, if you could just say that, you know, I agree with that person, yea or nay, and move on because we have a very, very long agenda tonight. And that may I have an adoption of the agenda, please?
I'm moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have an adoption of the minutes for September the 22nd?
I move that we adopt the minutes as submitted.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, second. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you ahead on?
I have a question. Were you at the August 25th meeting?
No. This is the August minutes from September.
September, right. But we motioned to adopt the minutes, and it said unanimous approval. He was, it was adoption of the August 25th minutes, motion to approve, and everybody was unanimous approval.
Anybody has a public comment, please take it over to Darby before we start.
I'd like to call to order this Monday night, November the first, Planning Commission. Obviously, we did not have it last Wednesday, the 27th, due to power outage at the town, so we are reconvening tonight. Darby, may we have a roll call, please?
When I call your name, please state here or present for the record. Amanda Jackson Denmark.
Here.
Carly Wetmore.
Here.
Kathleen Duncan.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Matt Yost.
Here.
Ron Williams. Thank you.
A notice regarding adjournment. The Planning Commission will not hear new items after 9:30 unless authorized by a majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular meeting or a special meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments. Every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall address the chairman and in speaking avoid disrespect to the commission, staff, or other members of the meeting. You will need to state your name and address, and when speaking for the record, comments are limited to three minutes. And please, everyone, there's a lot of public comments tonight. If there is a comment that's already been said, if you could just say that, you know, I agree with that person, yea or nay, and move on because we have a very, very long agenda tonight. And that, may I have an adoption of the agenda, please?
I'm moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have an adoption of the minutes for September the 22nd?
I move that we adopt the minutes as submitted.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, second. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you ahead on?
I have a question. Were you at the August 25th meeting?
No. This is the August minutes from?
This is September.
September, right. But we motioned to adopt the minutes, and it said unanimous approval. He was, it was adoption of the August 25th minutes, motion to approve, and everybody was unanimous approval, but I believe you recused yourself because you were absent from the previous meeting.
Who needs to add recuse?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then I need to put a second?
Madam Chair, we can get that. Staff can get that taken care of and add that notation to the minutes, but y'all can still approve them at tonight's meeting.
Okay. Then can I get all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comments. For those of you who have comments pertaining to the agenda item, for the commission this evening, you'll have the opportunity to comment before we vote on the item. You're welcome to hold your comments or voice your comment at this time if it's any agenda, any item that's not on the agenda, or you can wait until your item appears on the agenda. Is there anyone that wants to speak regarding an item not on the agenda? Then we'll move on to old business. This is the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement Amendment public hearing, a request for a fifth amendment to the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement to provide dockside fueling and a second dry stack boat storage at Big House Tracks Anson Marina. First, we're going to have staff do their report and then let the applicant speak, and then after that we will either have the commission
Recording in progress.
ask some questions or go to public comments. So we just want to make sure everybody's heard tonight. So Kevin, if you'll proceed, please.
I need to recuse myself.
Amen.
For one and two.
Thank you. Matt has recused.
Madam Chairman, if you'd just give me a moment here. We have some of the applicants for this item on Zoom, so just give us a second. We'll get them zoomed in here. All right, Madam Chairman, just so you know, we have two of the applicants on Zoom here, so I believe it's Jordan and Will. So if you guys just want to keep your microphones muted for the time being, and we're going to do a staff presentation, and then we'll have an opportunity. We also have applicants present, Mr. Hughes with Thompson Hutton, who can get up and do a presentation as well. So thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, we are here for the request by Palmetto Bluff LLC for the fifth amendment to the development agreement to provide dockside fueling, second dry stack storage at the Big House Anson Track, as well as the second amendment to the concept plan to provide the dockside fueling and second dry stack storage to the Big House Tracks Anson Marina. So at the August 25th Planning Commission, commissioners, you heard the request of various amendments to the development agreement, the concept plan. There were some additional documents referring to clarifying the number and location of water access points. There was some confusion as to what the initial request was, and you had a couple of questions and concerns. I'm going to go over those here in just a second. But on September 27th, the applicant actually revised their application as well as their narrative to reflect their current request, and that is to only make changes to the development agreement and the concept plan text to allow for the dockside fueling and then the second dry stack storage at Big House. So just kind of going back, some of the questions that you previously had. You said that you'd like to see all the previous amendments, timeframes for Palmetto Bluff as it relates to the location, relocation of all docks, piers, dry storage, boats, ramps, et cetera. So we did provide a copy of that in your packet. In essence, it's a moot point since the applicant has revised their request for the text only. So as previously shown, they were requesting some additional docks. There was a clarification of docks. All of that has been removed from the request, so, you know, it's the new request does not change the number of docks, piers, boat ramps from the approved concept plan. You also wanted to see the hierarchy of codes as it relates to Palmetto Bluff, dealing with fuel components and conflicts with general codes. So hopefully, this kind of helps to explain the hierarchy we have. So at the very bottom, which is the DSO or the Development Standards Ordinance, in essence, it's the zoning ordinance that's in place for Palmetto Bluff. So that's the lowest level of restrictions. As you move up, we have some modifications to the DSO. So from a hierarchy standpoint, you're stacking on top of that. Next is we have the concept plan, and that's where they're proposing the changes for paragraph 1G, excuse me, section 1G, paragraph nine, and then section 2B or B4 to allow dry stack storage and dockside fueling. And then above that is the development agreement, which from a hierarchy standpoint is the highest document that allows for the regulations. And again, it's consistent language and changing in Article 10. Next, you had questions. Is there, you know, equivalent to a traffic study for docks? So there's no, there's no equivalent for a traffic impact analysis on the water. However, marinas, they can estimate the amount of activity based on the size of fuel storage, number of slips, and anticipated usage for the site. And if you have questions about that, I would actually let the applicant speak on that. You wanted more information on dockside fueling and how it operates. So after discussion with the applicant's engineer, the site would operate like any other marina where you have dockside fueling. The gas lines would be located, you know, under the dock in a double-lined hose and connect with the topside gas dispensers. All of that is regulated by DEHEC. There was concerns over traffic, pollution, noise as it relates to the new marina and additional docks. Well, again, there's no additional docks. The second amendment to the development agreement for Palmetto Bluff, which was approved in 2005, which is 16 years ago, which allows for the marina to be constructed, and that they're restricted to not exceed 10% of the total cumulative number of approved development units in Palmetto Bluff, which is 4,000. And in the first phase of their development, shall not exceed 50 slips in addition to the area utilized by transient kayaks and vessels. So the marina permit that they have does show for those 50 slips and then a, as well as, you know, additional slips of, I believe it's up to 170. There was concerns about the legalized component of having dockside fueling. Again, that's where they're required to meet all of the DEHEC requirements, as well as being part of the South Carolina Clean Marina Program Certification. You asked to simplify this to a post-it level information, take out excessive language. Again, that's where that amended application and narrative has removed all of the items related to describing the types of docks, types of piers. The new request is clear. It's just the dockside fueling and dry stack storage at Anson Marina. You wanted to be clear the number of slips and how they're calculated. Again, that's in that second amendment to the development agreement where they have the right to construct in the first phase, which is the 50 slips, and then, and then their permit currently has the 170. If they went up to a total of 400, obviously, they would need to get an updated or new permit through DEHEC.
Kevin, related to that, they have a DEHEC permit for 176 right now. Is that correct?
I believe that's the number. It's, I believe it's 170, 176. That is correct.
That's a
Already approved. Already approved. And then you asked for a copy of the marina permit, which was provided in your packet as well. Okay. So the revisions, tried to, again, make this as clear as possible. So this is the section, section 10, 7, C, and the existing text to be removed is in red, and then the text that's going to be added is in blue. So you can see where it says dry stack facilities shall be permitted at only two of the accesses, and then fueling facilities shall be allowed at the accesses, but with the exception of Big House access point, there shall be no dispensing of fuel either at docks or within the buffers or setbacks areas. And then the proposed language, which is consistent, is with the exception of Big House water access point for the fueling facilities, as well as the dockside fueling of the existing under the, the concept plan, section 2B for B4. Again, with the development agreement, the review criteria that are in place, we have all of them listed here. I'm happy to go through them individually if you so choose. From a review process and next step standpoint, again, this is a little dated, still shows October 27th. It is obviously November 1st. This would be forwarded to planning, excuse me, Town Council for their November 9th meeting, and then a second public hearing and final reading would be at their December 14th meeting. So again, Planning Commission actions are to, to review the request and then hold a public hearing and forward your recommendation to Town Council. This evening, your actions are to recommend approval of the application, recommend approval with any potential amendments, or recommend denial of the application. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is both on Zoom as well as in the audience, and I believe that they're going to come up and present some information as well. So if you have any questions for me related to the text, but if there's questions for the applicant, I'd feel it's more appropriate that they would answer those questions.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to present anything or?
Give me one second, please.
Not a map.
Hey, now you got to let me get back.
All right, good evening. My name is Mike Hughes with Thompson Hutton. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As Kevin said, we have whittled down the two items, right, to be clear. So we are looking for dockside fueling, and we are looking for a second dry stack. So we can start with the dry stack. This is not something, there are a few concerns that this is something that happened overnight. This is something we've been talking about for years. It's also the application was submitted in March. There were some concerns it was an ownership transition, that they were pushing to do things that we hadn't been doing previously, and that's not true. For dry stack specifically, it is actually the preferred method from an environmental standpoint to use dry stack storage as opposed to wet slips. So we are looking to implement dry stack as an additional use as opposed to just doing all wet slips, as it is the preferred method. In fact, if you go to OCRM, dry stack storage types, based on their regulation 30-12, dry stack storage or marinas are preferred whether feasible, and an applicant for a marina permit will be required to show why a dry stack facility is infeasible in holder and part. So it's actually the preferred method, and it's because you don't have shading, you have less likelihood for spills, you don't have anti-fouling paint. So from the standpoint of environmental perspective, dry stack storage is a good use as opposed to all wet slips for the entitled 400 units we do have entitlements for, based on the 10% of the total entitlements of 4,000 dwelling units. So that's dry stack. The other thing we heard on public comment last time was concerns over visibility. We've got an aerial map up, and I know it's kind of small relative to where you're sitting, but those are one-mile increments, right? We have pushed this down to the south portion of the property. It is on the New River. The New River has a total of three water access points within the entire stretch of Palmetto Bluff, which goes up approximately 14 miles up the New River, a critical line. So in terms of traffic and in terms of visibility, this is not someplace that's going to be obtrusive to a bunch of residents. This is deliberate. Again, New River, or the May River is an outstanding resource water. We've pushed development away from the New River, or from the, from the May River because of the quality of the, you know, we've got oyster beds that are closer to that location. So again, dry stack is considered to be a better alternative. Dry stack in uplands will be encouraged in preference to mooring in crowded areas as well. That's another regulation or reference to the regulation.
I'm confused. Are you offering to give up wet slips in exchange for dry stack?
So of the 400, I don't have the authorization to do that right now. We have
You see where I'm confused?
Oh, no.
It sounds like you're saying dry stack is preferred, but you're asking for additional.
Under the application right now, it says specifically, it's 10% wet slips.
And I'm sorry, I just
No, you're, no, you're correct. In the application right now, the simple change was, but not for dry stack at two locations. So that's correct.
So let me clarify, because I was going in the same direction.
Yeah.
How many are in the dry stack?
We haven't designed a dry stack yet because we don't, it'd be presumptuous to design a dry stack without entitled rights to one.
So it is dry stack plus the 176?
As of right now, we have a permit for 170. I think before I referenced 186, that was an old application. But under permit right now, we have a wet slip permit, a wet slip marina permit for 170 wet slips with entitlements for 400.
And something else you said, I was just curious, you wanted to push this marina away from the May River to protect the oyster beds, I think the words you used.
Yeah.
What are you concerned about? Is that going to have a problem for the New River?
So there are no, well, let me show you a map. So in terms of proximity, Kevin, all right, so this right here is a map that shows the state-regulated oyster beds. And you can see the relative distance, and you can kind of see where I've got the area pointed out. We are eight miles from the nearest state-regulated oyster or shellfish bed, right? If you were to push anything up towards the north of the property, it would actually be closer to state-regulated oyster beds. So from a distance standpoint, we are further from any other marina. And yes, we did, when we designed Palmetto Bluff, when we were planning for Palmetto Bluff, we pushed development further down to the lower end of the property away from the outstanding resource water that is the May River. But yes. So, all right, so that was dry stack. And then similarly, for fuel or water, right, we do have 170 wet slips entitled today, right, with the ability to go to another total of 400. We would like to point out that, again, we are also eight miles from the nearest fueling station. So from the standpoint of convenience, right, it's certainly more convenient to be located where the boats are. The boats will be in the water. They will be fueled on water. It will either happen at the marina, or they will have to travel eight miles to the Fusky Island to fuel. We are committed to being a clean marina. They're not, right? And then if you wanted to get diesel, you would actually have to go to, not Freeport, you'd have to go all the way. Right now, I don't think they have diesel at Freeport. You'd have to go 12 miles away to Harvortown. So the idea of going out of the town 12 miles or eight miles to fuel up when you can have the convenience, the regulation, the control, and the way we've done things at Palmetto Bluff, to have it locally, further away from shellfish beds, seems to be the more environmentally sensitive thing to do. On top of that, and I know this isn't, shouldn't be the primary consideration, but there is also the business tax or the business license fee that any revenue generated, it's $1.20 for every $1,000 in business generated at and within the town. So again, from the standpoint of how is it beneficial, financially beneficial, sorry, and it's also beneficial from the environmental standpoint because fueling will happen on the water. I would rather we control it, we regulate it, and we don't force people to go another eight miles away to get fuel. On an island that's on a, that has no access by truck or any other means to get fuel to the station. So if there, if there's the opportunity, if it goes open to public comment, I would like the opportunity, at least if I can, answer some questions that may be from the public or may be of concern. So, but for now, unless you have other questions, I'll sit down.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to? Go ahead and open?
All right, yeah, if, yes.
I was just going to ask I was just going to ask the commission if they wanted to go ahead and discuss any items, or go ahead and open for public comment, what everyone comfortable with.
I'd almost like to get the input first before we, that's just my opinion.
Everybody okay with that?
Oh, wait, yes.
Public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So can we have a motion to go into public comment?
The motion to open.
Just open it.
The public hearing.
To open the public hearing.
For both items, so again, there's two items, so two items, one discussion, and at the end, there will be two separate votes.
Okay.
So you're, you can do a combined motion for both of the items right now for the public hearing.
Combined, open.
For the public hearing purposes, and then once there's a decision, or once, once all the public comments have been provided, you would then need to make sure that you close.
Public comment.
Public comment. Yes, ma'am.
So I am going to open the public comment for both Palmetto Bluff.
Madam Chairwoman, may I propose a motion? A motion to open up Agenda Items 8, 8, 1, and 2.
Okay.
Regarding the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement Amendment and Proposed Concept Plan Amendment for a public hearing.
That, or I can say what Richardson?
You can, if somebody moves, that'll be fine.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Richardson. So we will now open public comment. Terri Springer is first. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Terri Springer. I live at 168 Gilded Street, and I'm written, reading a statement that was written by Christine Bugrette, because she can't be here today. Dear Planning Commission and Town Council, I am writing to express my concerns over the proposed changes to the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement. These proposed changes not only contradict the original vision and environmental stewardship that Palmetto Bluff represented, but also potentially affects the integrity of the leadership of the Town of Bluffton. Development agreements are a commitment and only have legitimacy if they are rigorously maintained. In 1998, the leadership of the Town of Bluffton obtained these commitments with Palmetto Bluff, with the future of Bluffton in mind. These forward-thinking leaders knew that the natural environment is and was Bluffton's greatest asset. The rapid development occurring in Beaufort County is like death by a thousand cuts to the spectacular Low Country landscape that gives us all a quality of life. Adding dockside fueling and an enlarged marina to an environmentally sensitive area is clearly not in the best interest of our community. The consequences include loss of wildlife habitat, noise and light pollution, water quality issues, significant increase of boat traffic, marsh erosion, and loss of natural view corridors. Please deny the proposed changes to the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement. This is not in the interest of the long-term well-being of Bluffton. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Collins Doughty?
Collins Doughty. Hi, my name is Collins Doughty, 55B Oyster Street, Bluffton. I've lived here my entire life. I know the New River very well, and I don't want to be repetitious with some of the things that I know are going to be said, but I've just been listening thus far. The, I'm going to start with the dry stack storage. I have not heard how many slots they're going to have in this dry stack storage, and I think if they really want that, then they need to downsize the size of the marina. The fuel dock, you know, the history here, on Hilton Head, you've got Palmetto Bay, you've got Hilton Head Harbor and Harbertown. Palmetto Bay and Hilton Head Harbor have been here, they're one of the earliest marinas around. Harbertown is a basin, so if anything should happen, they can cut it off quickly. I haven't heard what distance the fuel dock will be from the shoreline, and because something that's concerning, I took a couple people in my boat, I put them in at the landing on Highway 170, down the New River, all the way to the proposed site. And I don't know if anybody's done that or whatever, but the New River has grass that is not like the Spartina that you would see right around here. The grass is way taller back when they, where the old rice fields were. And I noticed just before you get to where the site is, there's a dock on the other, on the south side of the river, and there was at least 40 yards of grass piled up against that dock. And I know that a lot of it washes down that river. And I can't imagine, if you have the fuel dock way out there, and you have, you know, a big water event or storm or whatever, a lot of stuff's going to come down that river and pile up on that dock, and it could possibly break it loose. Plus, if you're looking for transient boats like big sport fishermen or whatever, you know, I can't imagine them coming down to get on their boat, and it's stacked up with 40, 50 yards of grass piled up on the side of their boat. I mean, it's just something that I don't know that anybody's looked at. You know, and also navigating the New River, and I've, I'm planning on taking, one of the boats that I guide people, and I've been doing it for a long time, is a 60-foot sport fishing boat. And at low tide, I want to see what it's like trying to get up the New River, because toward the mouth of the New River, there's an island that's right in the middle of the river, and it's skinny at low tide. It's, it's shallow. I can't imagine that.
That's time.
Okay, I'm sorry. But those are some of my concerns.
Thank you. I have Al Stokes, please. Al Stokes, did you have a comment regarding this issue? It just says Planning Board.
Al Stokes, 207 Sawmill Creek Road, Bluffton. Good evening. I've been here for a long times, moved here in 1978, and I came down there working for the Department of Natural Resources. And the first thing that we had to do with my work was to find out if the water quality in this area was superb, and it is. It's outstanding resource waters. You don't find water like this about anywhere else. This area is very unique in the world. Also, I'm a big fan of history. I read all the time, and I find that history can be good and bad. And the thing is about the bad part of history is we need to learn from it and not make any more mistakes in the future. Well, if you look at the history here, we had state and local authorities promote, very hard to have a chemical plant placed on the Colleton River. This was going to be on a 1,200-acre site, they were going to bring railroad service in there. They were also going to dump, I think, around 3 million gallons of acid effluent into the Colleton River every day. It was going to bring in jobs and revenue, but it would have been bad for the environment. It would have destroyed wildlife. Like anything, you put in the river, fuel or anything else, it goes by the whim of the tide. It will go down, it'll come back, and it moves very rapidly, so it's going to spread. It's not going to be isolated. The people pushed against, again, the people pushed against that, and it was stopped. They also pushed against Brown and Root, that were going to build oil derricks on the same property or adjacent property. People won with that as well. Later on, it was Chicago Bridge and Iron to build a manufacturing plant on the Colleton River, which is now Colleton River Plantation. And the people pushed back against that because they wanted water quality above all things. In 1992, the county pushed extremely hard to put a boat manufacturing company here on Victoria Bluff. And people pushed hard against it. They were going to build a large dock out into the Colleton River and put fuel facilities on there to fill up yachts. And we were worried about fuel spills on the Colleton River, and we did some studies on that. And we pushed against it, and we won with that one as well. That section now is 156 acres, it's owned by the public, and if it had been developed, not only would we could have had a chemical spill, we could have had stormwater full of fiberglass and fuel and everything else washing into the Colleton River. So we need to learn from mistakes like this. I'm totally against fuel station on that section. And by the way, if you're going and live on the May, on the New River, and you're going to go take a trip, you're going down, you're going toward Hilton Head, and it's not a whole lot of the way to go and fill up eight miles down the New River. I also have a question, how large is that fuel tank, and where will it be located?
It's time. Time, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have answered as well.
Thank you.
Location, and I'll.
If the next one's Randy Bomey.
First, I want to say it's an honor.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I will, I will.
No, no now, please.
My name is Randy Bomey, I live at 37 Hope's Neck Drive, and that's in Palmetto Bluff. First, I'd like to say to Al Linda Collins, thank you for being here tonight. Those two gentlemen are world-renowned experts. And one on the left, when it comes to water quality, there's nothing better, period. I came with prepared statement this evening, I think most of you know who I am. Again, my name is Randy Bomey, and I reside at 37 Hope's Neck Drive in Palmetto Bluff. First, I state with sincere belief that our new owners, South Street Partners, are exceptional individuals, and that they will do their best to facilitate the greatest ROI for their shareholders, which is admirable and truly their job. But they also will observe the requirements of environmental stewardship to maximize efficiencies for environmentalism and the ecology. We can, without doubt, come to a mutual, mutually agreeable position, generating the best capitalistic opportunity for South Street while observing and maintaining the incredible and delicate balance of nature. Our goal is to merge science with capitalism and react accordingly. Needless to say, I wish that the Low Country would stop all urbanization, but I understand that my wish is unrealistic and unfair to many baby boomers who are retiring in the northern states and desire to relocate to Bluffton for their final chapter of life. So tonight, I ask that the Planning Commission deny South Street access for development until they acknowledge and commit to a bipartisan plan to jointly manage the greatest environmental region in Beaufort County, while building an infrastructure and ecosystem that will yield minimal damage. To South Street, I extend my personal gratitude for your willingness to work together to the environmental entities present. That's why I don't do prepared statements, I'm better on my own. To those that have come tonight, we very much appreciate it, and our picket back up too. So acknowledge and commit to a bipartisan plan to jointly manage the greatest environmental region in Beaufort County while building an infrastructure and ecosystem that will yield minimal damage. To South Street, I extend my personal gratitude for your willingness to work together to the environmental, to the environmental entities present this evening. I applaud your lifelong fight to maintain the region as God intended it to be, a living equilibrium between humans and nature. Lastly, I thank you for your unconditional support. So in conclusion, I suggest that South Street must present a development.
Sir.
One sentence, a developmental plan that the environmental and scientific world approves.
We need to move on.
Which can be done.
Sir.
Sir, we need to respect everybody in this room, please.
I'm Jane Hester, 8 Palmetto Beach Drive. I agree with what the first lady said totally, so I'm going to skip some of the stuff that I have written down here, so I hope I end up making sense. Okay, well, I'm a 50-year resident of Bluffton, and for over 30 years, I taught the children of Bluffton. I see parents of children here, I see children here that I taught during my career. And now I'm greatly distressed by the continuing changes requested by the subsequent owners of Palmetto Bluff to the original agreement. And I am equally distressed by the acquiescence of the Town of Bluffton. In exchange for higher density, Palmetto Bluff agreed to limit access to and to protect its surrounding waters. Since that time, that signing, there has been continual erosion of those protections. Already, the town has agreed to a huge marina on the New River. And now, the town has been asked to approve fuel over water, specifically denied by the original request, as was more than one area with dry dock storage. I wonder how those who bought land originally in Palmetto Bluff feel about those changes. And I wonder whether or not they were asked about how they feel, and I would like to hear an answer from South Street about that. We took a little trip to the site, which I have been to a number of times by land, but we went by water, and as we did, we noted how heavily the area is commercially fished by crabbers. At certain points along the New River, crab traps were three abreast, they were as close as they possibly could legally be to each other. Boat wakes, as we all know, particularly those of us with docks, create a lot of turbidity. If we have a dock with even 50 boat slips, that's just the original, how many boat wakes is that going to create? If we end up with the not-yet-approved-by-OCRM 400-plus 170 transients, I think it will be an environmental disaster. So I want to ask you, please, as everybody else has done, to deny this. I'm also wondering about water quality studies. Originally, in their 2005 permit, they had a water quality study from 2003. Have we had subsequent studies? I do not know, because I could not find that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Daly, please.
Hello, I'm Jack Daly, former of Myrtle Lane, Hilton Head, and I don't have an address for my Bluffton property, because it's a lot of Martian islands that are next door to Palmetto Bluff. Okay, so I have privately held Martian islands in that neighborhood, and they're pristine, they're priceless, and they're irreplaceable. And I've toured those islands, I brought the head of South Carolina Audubon out there with me, people from Beaufort County Open Land Trust, and I photographed birds and sent them to Felicia Sanders with DNR. And Audubon has a priority bird list of 61, 62 birds. We've identified that at least 27 of those use that property for forage, okay? And that's a global list of 61, okay? That is priceless habitat, and if we have an oil spill, a gas spill, any kind of damage to that property, some of those birds, red knots, fly from South America, land there, double their body weight in three days, fly straight to the tundra, okay? It's a critical link in habitat. And I wish South Street, or whoever they are, would consider putting the property under easement instead of underdevelopment. That's the direction we need to go. So please, for a few tax dollars here and there, let's not make a mistake that we can't fix, okay? So please deny both their requests. And I agree with Mr. Collins, that river is snakey, full of snags, sandbar, is very dynamic, and it's narrow. The size boats they're looking to put up there, they couldn't turn around in that river. It's really no more than a creek. And that kind of damage of all those boats, back and forth, back and forth through that habitat, disturbing birds, it's not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford Bartholo, please.
My name is Ford Bartholo, I live at 9 Dutchhouse Circle in Palmetto Bluff. I'd like to go on record respectfully requesting that an email I send to all Town Council members on Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, regarding this marina proposal, as well as an island packet article I sent to the same Town Council on October 25th regarding coastal damage from development. development be provided to all Planning Commission members prior to any vote on this issue. In that email, I highlighted that most of the money behind South Street is from two funds located in Greenwich, Connecticut, and London, run by former Goldman Sachs Partners and the Kuwaiti Investment Authority, which is Kuwait Sovereign Wealth Fund. Goldman Sachs is a large investment bank headquartered in New York, was very integral in causing United States economic collapse in 2008 to 2010, which led to the loss of hundreds of thousands of homes owned by low to middle-income citizens and cost taxpayers hundreds of billions of dollars. The town council email I referenced has an article attached to it describing Goldman's guilty plea and its more than $5 billion fine. So, I was thinking what to say about the well-known ecological damage that the marina construction will cause. I reviewed the meeting, the meeting's agenda packet, all 482 user-friendly pages. In that staff report, which established the criteria that the DUDO establishes for the comprehensive plan, that this amendment promotes and is consistent with the land-use goals, environmental objectives, overall intent of policies within the comprehensive plan. Really? Is a marina really a worthy environmental objective? Also in the comprehensive plan right here, Chapter 4, Natural Resources. Bluffton's quality of life is based on the fundamental principle that healthy ecosystems support healthy people, which in turn promote a healthy economy. While the quality of life can be preserved by protecting and enhancing this area's natural resources, unchecked development pressure may negatively affect local ecology and result in a wide range of environmental and economic problems. I sure haven't heard that tonight from anybody presenting from the staff or anybody else. Second in that, the amendment is consistent with the intent of the planned unit development zoning district for Palmetto Bluff. In that, it says, "The PUD provides for a high-quality environmentally sensitive community through improved design, character, and quality of walkable mixed-use developments and the preservation of natural and scenic features." Really? Eliminating an ancient maritime forest and destroying native marshlands and endless wildlife and replacing them with cement bulkheads, parking lots, and fuel tanks fulfills the comprehensive plan? Who the hell are we kidding? It doesn't do that at all. I can say, as a taxpayer, I find these staff findings to be completely lacking of due diligence and holistic assessment. At a minimum, they're one-dimensional and superficial, and they could be called deceitful and wholly misleading. A small subset of Bluffton's taxpayers will be economically rewarded, but the rest of us taxpayers will be left with a complete tragedy.
Thank you, sir. Jesse White.
Jesse White.
Thank you, Jesse White, on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. We appreciate that South Street listened to community concerns and removed the requests for new water access points on Doughboy and Long Island. However, dockside fueling and a new dry stack pose substantial and unnecessary risks. We urge you to recommend denial of these changes because they're incompatible with the original vision for Palmetto Bluff and inconsistent with its governing documents in the town's comprehensive plan. Since inception, Palmetto Bluff has been cherished and held up as uniquely special in terms of its diverse natural resources, in terms of its vast waterways and view sheds, and in terms of the widespread recognition of the implications that development can have on those resources, particularly the water quality of the May, Cooper, and New Rivers. Everyone agreed that development must be carefully undertaken with keen sensitivity to protecting the environmental resources of the property. And it's those core values that have created and kept Palmetto Bluff as such a desirable and valuable place to live and enjoy. Today, South Street's requesting changes that are contrary to the sensitive nature and core values of that property. The original development agreement contemplated a single dry stack and explicitly prohibited dockside fueling. These were key commitments under the agreement. Lifting those restrictions now could have a domino effect on the intensity of water use and development on the southern end of Palmetto Bluff and beyond. The town well knows the challenges that come with rapid growth and development. The existing agreement protects the town from unfettered and unwise growth, and we recommend that those protections remain. South Street purchased the property knowing the terms of the development agreement. They should not be permitted to make changes now that are solely for maximum private gain at the expense of public resources. A new dry stack and dockside fueling pose significant risk to water quality and threaten irreparable damage to the pristine and highly unique New River estuary. While a marina at Big House Anson has long been part of the plans, dockside fueling and a new dry stack were never part of those plans, and they are not authorized under the existing marina permit. We have confirmed with DEHAC officials that such changes would require the application to go back out on public notice. This is because dockside fueling and a new dry stack are more intense water uses that come with more significant environmental impacts. The size and scale of the marina contemplated by South Street is inappropriate within the context of this ecologically valuable landscape. There are at least five deep-water marinas with dockside fueling already in existence on nearby Hilton Head Island. We also have concerns that a major marina will lead to dredging in the New River due to the limited navigability and the desire to target large vessel traffic from the intercoastal waterway. Approving these changes will undermine the integrity and the value that define Palmetto Bluff as a high-quality, environmentally sensitive community. We urge you to uphold the spirit and intent of the original development plans and recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Fran Boland. Fran Boland, am I saying it right?
Thank you very, very much. I'm Fran Hayward Boland. I grew up in Bluffton, and I still call it my home, though I live at Buckingham Landing, have six 1965, so my dress is Hilton Head. I've heard much of what I agree with today, and I don't want to repeat it, because I don't want you to have to hear it more than one time, but what they said ditto, all right? The other part I want to say, though, is that you have a lot of power, you have a lot of authority. I know you're not the deciding body, but your recommendation is extremely important. And the public, that's us, and that's all the people out there we don't see, and children to come, who are still little now, and they'll come and want to live here. I want you to protect the natural resources for them. And you, you have heard what the proposed changes to the agreement will do to those natural resources. You've heard it better from other people than I can give it to you. Please be respectful of those natural resources for the future, future children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Walton. Jim Walton.
Hello, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Walton, and I live at 52 Oyster Street in Alljoy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You have before you the tip of an iceberg, metaphorically speaking. I'd like to address what is before you and the public at large that we don't see, cannot anticipate, or refuse to consider. We, what we have is a fifth amendment to our original agreement that promised strict limits on shoreline development in lieu for greater density on Palmetto Bluff. What we refused to consider was the hollowness of that promise and the subsequent bulldozing of our precious Low Country. Developers will say they're not hiding anything, that they're not icebergs, their aim is to alter the land and coastline for profit is in plain sight. And so it is. But the work of the Planning Commission goes beyond the profit motive or filling tax coffers. You are tasked with managing Bluffton's growth, not setting it on fire. You are aware of the population figures. Depending on the source, 147% increase in population since the 2010 census, a 770% increase from 2000, two years after annexation of the town into Palmetto Bluff. Drive anywhere in Southern Beaufort County, go to any community with a county boat ramp or sandbar nearby, experience stormwater runoff in your neighborhood, and you will see the consequences of unchecked growth. Long Island, as it has been plotted, to my count, for 63 home sites. It is completely surrounded by salt marsh, the vascular system of the Low Country. The Cooper River from Ram's Horn Creek northward, as it webs around Long Island, is a designated outstanding resource water. That hasn't been mentioned tonight. What business does your government body, town council, or DEHAC have allowing development of this barrier island? Who speaks for bird life? The fish, oysters, and dolphins who depend on an unmanicured, pristine coastline. What is the point of the OCRM critical line where the proposed Anson Marina, Doughboy, and Long Island developments are within if there is no accountability? The first step is deny, to deny this application for dry stack storage and overwater fueling. Next step is to seriously consider an action plan that puts wildlife and the coastal estuine system on equal footing with developers, reaping huge profits from the very thing they are desecrating.
Time.
I am submitting a petition.
Yes, sir, thank you.
To Darcy.
Ansley Manuel.
I thank you for letting me speak, Madam Chairman and Committee. I want to thank you all for asking for more information from the last meeting.
Ansley, can you say your name and address for the record, please?
104 Pritchard Street, Ansley Manuel. Thank you. And I want to thank the applicant for simplifying their request. I agree with most of everything that has been said tonight. I want to revisit the annexation deal that was made between this town and the original developers, because at the time, Palmetto Bluff was part of Beaufort County. So, here's the deal. The town was giving them triple the density, triple the housing units that the county would have, and I have that in some of the news articles, research, and I just remember it. In exchange for that, the developer agreed to limit dockage. And also, it's not even a gray area in this agreement. It's very clear, no fuel over water, and it's very clear that they will only going to allow them to have one dry stock boat storage facility. So, both parties got something that they wanted out of this deal. So, you know, to turn around and start chipping away at it, it's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ansley.
Thank you.
Vox Bell. You. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Vox Bell, and I live at 3 Nanny Cove Road. I was not planning on speaking tonight, so I may be a little fumblesome, but I've lived here my entire life. I absolutely support development. And so, last, the last meeting that these amendments were brought, I came with an open mind. And it quickly became very obvious that the applicants were trying to craft a way through, through clarifying terms, as a way to take a backdoor approach to ultimately passing these amendments. I come from a family of attorneys, I can spot that from my level. That's exactly what they were doing. And I was shocked that the town of Bluffton Planning Department basically gave each of these amendments, as proposed, a green light, yet had no plans or drawings, cited no impact studies, and absolutely could not even begin to articulate an explanation to y'all, or to, to the public. Arguments against these proposed amendments are not about limiting access to waterways. It's about protecting these waterways from being exploited and treated solely as a commodity for financial gain, destroying it as they go. At the last meeting, I would, I mean, I guess I'm happy that they revised these amendments and the proposal, but at the last meeting, I believe it was Mike Hughes said, what Bree has, and I quote, I went back into the transcript and found it, "What Bree has asked us to do is eliminate fuel, dockside fuel, at any location but one. Right now, it is questionable whether we have it at every existing location. We're saying one location, no other locations." So, I guarantee you, they will be back up here a year from now, two years from now, whenever, asking for chipping away, as Ansley said, at what was crafted originally for a Palmetto Bluff has been done well to this point, but you cannot let the previous owner's reputation have any impact on what these current owners are asking or, or what their intentions are, because it's, it's a clean slate. So, I ask you to vote no. I don't think you should compromise on any of it. I feel like a lot of times, people will ask for more and then settle to get what they want. So, I don't think you should compromise, I think you should no, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close public comment?
Do you have to do a second and third call for it?
Oh, do I need to?
Ideally, yes. Just do a second and third call, just to make sure that there's nobody else out there.
So, public comment?
Just, first call for public comment, second call for public comment.
Okay, first call for public comment. Oh, we have one? And she?
Public comment, I think you can.
That's in the discretion of the chair, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Come on, Charlene. But if you could, fill out the card when you're done.
My name is Charlene Gardner. I live at 31 Brunson, unincorporated Beaufort County. I was hoping I wasn't going to talk, but I think the discussion and what you all should keep in your mind as you think about all this, as I see more and more poor choices being made in Bluffton, exacerbated growth, is, is this about convenience? Or are we going to think about what is happening with disastrous water situations all over the world? It's not just here, it's not just in this country. It's happening around the world. And if we don't open our eyes, why are we even discussing climate change? Because it's right here in front of us. And is it convenient for him to drive eight miles to get fuel? Sorry. I think there's plenty of opportunity. I think you should consider denying the application for protection of our waterways, protection of our way of life. There's certainly a beautiful development there, and people can use it just fine without those amenities. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. One up, one last, before I do another roll call.
Second, third call.
Yeah, I know, second, third call.
Good evening, Bob Colborne, 82, Bounder Street, Bluffton. I've agreed with just about everything that's been said so far, but the one thing that I did want to point out was the petition that was delivered a few minutes ago has 1,140 signatures on it in county. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I do that again?
You can go ahead and have a motion to close public hearing.
Because I've had my two. Okay, I have a motion to close public hearing, please.
I'm moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I can just, just briefly, for the members of the audience, the reason that we go through that process with the public hearing is because the South Carolina Code for these types, certain types of applications require a public hearing. And so, that's why we have to follow those, that kind of odd, formulaic step.
Thank you for guiding me through it.
Robert Swills, we need to approve the.
We just seconded.
Oh, I may have a, all in favor of aye.
Sorry.
Okay, so, now we're going to discuss this amongst ourselves, and if there are any questions for staff or the applicant, does anyone want to start? Charlie, would you like to start?
Sure, why not?
Okay, Charlie.
I only took a couple of notes. First and foremost, I'm going to take about two minutes of chairman privilege. Not everybody up here has been around for a while, and when we have a room where Al Stokes, who is the reason Waddell is what it is, and where Colin Stoudt, he comes up, and where Fran Hayward come up, who are a key part of the history and talk, I start listening. And I had opinions beforehand, they, they haven't changed much, and, you know, I'm going to be open to the whole process. However, these people are the history of this area. And they- However, these people are the history of this area, and these people are the reason why we're as good as we are right now, along with other people. This and Coastal Conservation League, these waterways are unique. May River isn't a river. It's a tidal inlet, and it takes forever for pollutants to wash out of that river. These are all things we need to consider. I know we're talking about the New River now, but we are talking about our town. I do want to say to everybody sitting out there, regardless of what happens up here tonight, next Tuesday night, it goes before council. Keep that in mind. The only thing that I would ask staff is if council sees fit to try and pull some of these wet slips off the water in exchange for dry stack, is that a viable thing for them to consider negotiating, say, getting half of those 170 off the water for 100 dry stack? And getting it out of the water, where I've been told it's much better to not be in the water.
I'm going to look to Richardson to assist with that, just from a legality standpoint.
I mean, it would be a recommendation from us, but I don't know if it's even worth recommending.
Because this is a, I would not recommend including anything like that in whatever recommendation you go. And the reason is because this is a really high-level type of application. This is an amendment to a concept plan. It's an amendment to a development agreement. And although you do have some flexibility with crafting conditions as part of a development agreement amendment, you want to eliminate as much as you can, you know, crafting single solutions to a zoning issue for a particular developer.
Okay.
Again, development agreement, a little bit more flexibility, but because y'all's role is to recommend to town council, my preference would be to be very clear on your recommendations and try to make them as...
Yeah, that might muddy it up, too. I see what you're saying. And then, just the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, I've been around here for 30 years. I know the people that crafted this original agreement, and I know the intent, by my memory, by the best of my memory, the intent was to never have fuel. And the intent was to have a dry stack. And when it is so...
Couple of things. I'm not a longtime resident, but I've fallen in love with this, and we boat now and fallen in love with the rivers here. And I just, one of the groups is called the Freedom Boat Club, and they have the American Boating Club, and they're trying to create a little trip that goes up the New River. And it's supposed to be, I think, this Friday. But they said you can only have boats with 24 inches of draw on it, which is a very shallow boat. So for me, I'm sitting here trying to listen to the gentleman that started, and again, there was this concern about, well, we're far enough away from the May River and the hatcheries, so we're okay. But it still says, why are you worried about being close to them? It says to me there's pollution, turbidity, disturbance of those areas. But the other thing is, is that, you know, this trip that's supposed to go up the New River with this boating group, it says you have to make, you have to have a very small boat. It's only, I think he said, maximum of 28 feet long, 2 inches of draw, and it's very treacherous to get up there because it's so shallow. So I'm sitting here saying, are you going to have to dredge? Now, I think one of the public, but I had already made that note, you know, I'd love to know, are there plans to dredge the New River to allow this marina to work?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Michael's going to come up and address that for us.
Good evening. So no, there are not plans to dredge. We had done a bathymetric survey all the way from the mouth of the intercoastal waterway all the way down to the marina. So it is navigable. It was done previously when the first application was submitted, when the permit was extended. We also did a new one. It was, I think, in the spring. So we've got rivers move. This one has moved, but it's still sufficient for navigation.
Well, I did hear a public comment about talking about it at low tide, so...
There are a bunch of sandbars. So...
So is it, I mean...
It is navigable, but there, if you go through the New River, and I've been up in the New River, it definitely has a bunch of sandbars, but you can navigate it.
Is there a limit on a type of boat that would have to be?
I mean, I'm sure there's a limit to some size, but, I mean, certainly, again, we're going to have a marina, right? We gave up all single owner, homeowner dock rights. We put a buffer of 100 feet on every lot. So we've done all these things. We've got 14 miles of managed forest. I felt like, a little bit hearing some of the comments, that we haven't done environmentally sensitive things. We focused all of our water access to, basically, to marinas, right? I mean, they're managed, they'll be controlled. Again, from a fueling standpoint, we will be a clean marina. We will manage it. We will properly take care of it, and we will protect the waterway. But I'm happy to answer any other questions, but no, we've done bathymetric surveys.
Just out of curiosity, based on the questions here, do you know what the minimum depth is at low tide or not?
I don't, but I can let you know by the time we go to council.
I just was curious.
Sure. Everything's based on mean low water, and we've got the surveys.
Rich, did you have more comment?
No, I'm just looking it up myself, so...
Okay.
One of the things that I find that I'm pretty adamant on is property rights. And so I'm very vehement that if they had the right to do this, and if the intent of the document was the right to do this, that regardless of whether I liked it from an environmental standpoint, I would feel compelled to follow it and to go where the documents lead. My concern is that I don't see where the development agreement promotes or even provides a loophole for this. It's very clear about the number of dry stack storage. It's very clear about no fueling over the water. It's very clear that this is, that high-quality maintenance of the water is just the absolute utmost importance. That being said, one of the other things that I also took the opportunity to do is I did a search, Google search, so take this for what you will.
That's the utmost authority, Google search.
At the number of slips at some of the docks and marinas in the area. And so in doing so, it looked like Harwood Town had 100 slips. The Palmetto Bay Marina I saw had 100 slips, and I saw it had 144. So this is in excess of both of those. Wilma Harbor had 258. Skull Creek Marina had 179. So we're looking approximately aside of Skull Creek Marina. Freeport had 50. Broad Creek had 53. Beaufort Downtown Marina had 90. Fritpa had 65 wet and then 120 dry. So this would make this the...
Larger.
One of the largest, at full buildout, it will make it the largest in Beaufort County as far as I can find. And even at this phase that they're talking about...
Kathleen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you please speak up or move closer to the mic?
Oh, sorry. And even at what they're talking about, what's already OCR permitted, it's going to be one of the largest in Beaufort County. And I don't see a population base around Palmetto Bluff that supports that for one. And two, I don't think Palmetto Bluff was intended to be this intense type of a development. I took a boat ride out there. That is a very narrow waterway by comparison to some of these other marinas. I went and also measured the marinas on aerials. That has me majorly concerned. One woman mentioned the crab traps. So there are people currently using that, that this may encroach on their space. I don't, I do not know the answer to that because I don't remember exactly where those were in reference to these plans that I've seen. So it, but certainly the boat traffic would impact their commerce as well. The gentleman who owns property nearby, his, diminishing of his value to his property would be of major concern to me as well. And so I'm having a hard time supporting this. Like Charlie said, or Commissioner Whitmer said, if this, the second amendment to the development agreement gives them the 400 slips, we've already lost that battle. I can't fix that. None of us can fix that. But if the applicant was willing to change the terms, then I think we could potentially, you know, look at a different recommendation. But as it's currently recommended, and where if, like Charlie said, or Chairman Whitmer said, if they were willing to take some of those wet slips and put them on dry stack, that might be something that you consider. But I'm not, I mean, obviously, that's not what's before us, and that's not what I can comment on. So that is my long...
Okay.
...explanation of that. I certainly have, I mean, I still have questions in terms of, with the fueling, in terms of how much the activity that brings. I'm concerned about where those fuel tanks are, how big those are, but these are details to get into that I'm not, I don't think is appropriate necessarily to get into at the moment.
Okay. So I was just going to say that I appreciate everyone being here, and, you know, I'm like Kathleen, come in with an open mind. I see it both ways because I'm working the business, and I am here representing the town. So very, you know, it's a very important issue for all of us, and there's a lot of history here, and I appreciate all of you because we all wouldn't be here without each other. And I'm under the same view as my commissioners. So I think that if we're ready, we could go ahead and entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman, if I may interject, just for, you know, again, due process reasons, to make sure that the applicant has an opportunity to respond to the public comment, we need to make sure that both staff and applicant have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Michael, do you want to respond to anything on public comment?
We have two of the owners. I don't know if they want to say anything, Will or Jordan as well. I apologize for not having given them the opportunity previously. I just kind of sat down before the actual owners. Well, Jordan, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Absolutely. Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Well, thanks, Kevin, for your presentation, and thanks to the Planning Commission for your service. My name's Jordan Phillips. I'm a partner with South Street Partners. We are the group that acquired Palmetto Bluff in June of this year. We, this proposal was well down the road prior to our acquisition, and we are continuing to support those that came before us and their vision. We intend to fully comply with the long-term goals of development agreement in creating a sustainable community and continuing what has been done before us. Along those lines, Hart Howerton, the original planning firm based in the Bay Area as well as New York, who planned all of Wilson and came up the original concept plan for Palmetto Bluff, is now back on our team and continuing the planning and design for the balance of the community. And so excited to have a group like that back in our court. They are sustainability-focused, and it's very top of mind for them. I don't want to address specific comments that were brought up, but there is incorrect information circulating about who our partners are and what their backgrounds are. So I'll leave it at that. I'll let Will say a few words as well.
Yeah, thanks, Jordan, and Madam Chairman and Commission. Thank you very much. Look, I think, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak. I think it's important that, you know, Jordan and I, one, we're very sorry we can't be there in person. We were there on Wednesday, but we had some travel that took us out of the state this week. So thanks for allowing us this forum. Look, I think it's important for us to be present and show you that we are humans and that we are people. We have kids. We have families. We were drawn to Palmetto Bluff. We made the decision to purchase and acquire and continue the development of Palmetto Bluff. And I think sometimes that's lost with, you know, the, what people generally say about developers. But I think it's important to know the main reason we were drawn to Palmetto Bluff was the environmentally conservative development approach. We have a great relationship with Conservation Trust at Palmetto Bluff. We fully buy into the original design development criteria for Palmetto Bluff. As Jordan mentioned, this request was put in, in motion well in advance of our involvement. We support it. We support those who thought this was the appropriate action. But this isn't something that the new developers coming in and trying to slide through. I think, as Mike has pointed out, there's real reason for consideration here. But I, again, we are, Jordan and myself, Patrick Melton and Chris Randolph, the four partners of Palmetto Bluff, we look forward to, of South Street, we look forward to becoming a part of the community that is Bluffton. We were drawn to it. We love it. We love what you stand for. We love what Palmetto Bluff stands for, and we will continue to honor that tradition. So thanks for giving us the time.
I'll be as quick as I can. I just wanted to touch on a few things that went through. I mean, number one, the marina is happening, right? This is our access to water. Private dock rights as part of the development were relinquished in favor of two, technically three, water access points, type A water access points, specifically one at Wilson, one at Big House. Wilson was downsized, small, no dockside, or no water slips, right? All dry stack so that we could protect the May River, right? So that's the one thing. Another thing as I go down this, I think Jesse White mentioned, right, this does have to go out for public notice. This is the first step, right, for dockside fueling and for dry stack. We do have to go, if we are permitted by the town to pursue it any further, we still have to go through DEHEC. We still have to go through Army Corps of Engineers. These are things that are regulated by them. So this is just, there's no point going any further if the town does not give us the development rights to change the development agreement to allow these things to happen. So DEHEC is responsible for water quality. DEHIC is responsible for making sure we do things the right way, double line fuel tanks, anthony siphoning. So again, there are regulations in place to protect the water, and we will obviously be working with them on that. Again, clean marinas. Water quality testing. Water quality testing continues down at Big House, right? So we are still water quality testing to this day. We've been doing it since the beginning of the property. So there is still water quality happening. Learn from the history. I would say, if history shown us anything, we've done a really good job of development. So from the time we started in 1998, I think we've been an exemplary community. We have shown what good development can be. We have done preservation. We've got 5,000 acres of managed forest, and we've identified the places that are most sensitive. So I would say, yes, trust the history. We have done a good job, and we'll continue to do a good job. And then, again, balancing capital to environment, I feel like we continue to do that as well, again, by focusing water access points, which, again, water access point is part of the comprehensive plan. The 2014 comprehensive plan is to provide access to water for residents of Bluffton. So that is actually part of the comprehensive plan, and we continue to do that. But again, in localized areas as opposed to private docks, which is primarily how most folks in Bluffton get access to the water. And I think for the most part, I'll leave it at that. There is a lot of mention of Doughboy and Long Island. It's been part of the development plan. Long Island was timber harvested in 1980s. I mean, this isn't like it's an untouched piece of land. It has been part of the civiculture even as recently as cutting the pine trees down in the 80s. What else did I miss? I think that's most of the concerns I think I heard. But yeah, I thank you for your time.
Questions for Kevin? Want to address? Are we good, Kevin? Do you have anything else?
No, no further comments.
And then, Mrs. Madam Chairwoman, and I'm sorry to cut you off as y'all are about to do a motion, but just again, for y'all's, just as a reminder for y'all, your role tonight is to provide a recommendation to town council, but you still have to evaluate the criteria that staff has presented to y'all and make findings of fact, conclusions of law relative to those criteria. So again, make sure that those are part of your motions. And then, if I can make one other small comment, this is only one of many items on our agenda tonight, whichever way y'all vote, just for the public to be mindful that there's a lot of continuing business to happen afterwards. So to try to be as mindful and quiet as possible.
Thank you. Can I entertain the motion?
I would like to make a motion that Planning Commission recommends town council denial of the application as submitted due to these changes from the original development agreement and addendums. And we believe that it was clearly stated in the previous, well, that, we'll just leave it there.
And this is for, yeah, the development amendment, yep. Do I have a second?
Are you making the recommendation for both amendments or just the fifth?
Just one, just first right now, the development agreement.
Wait. We have to do it separately?
We have to do it separately.
Yeah, they're on the screen.
Okay. Okay. So the development, well, let me just go with this. I recommend to deny the request by Palmetto Bluff Development LLC for a Fifth Amendment to the Palmetto Bluff Development Agreement to provide for dockside fueling and a second dry stack boat storage at the Big House Trax Anson Marina.
Second?
For any further discussion?
Would this be the appropriate time to detail out the reason for the criteria?
Absolutely. This, y'all have it open for discussion. You can certainly bring that up and that will supplement the record. So we do have a motion and a second. So if you want to supplement the record that way, that'd be fantastic.
It would be my, that recommendation on due to inconsistency with the intent of the development agreement, inconsistency with the goals and objectives of the natural resources portion of the comprehensive plan.
And the clarity of the original with one dry stack and no fueling.
Yeah. Yeah.
That added in the motion?
Well, I think since you already have a motion and a second, that was more just supplemental information that has, that has kind of, again, being used to support the basis of the motion. And just again, for the record, if y'all can make sure that you speak into your microphones in case there's ever an appeal, we need to make sure that we pick up on everything that's said.
Okay. Well, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now I need a motion for the concept plan, item number two, under Old Business.
I can do that. I move to recommend denying the request by Palmetto Bluff Development LLC for a Second Amendment to the Palmetto Bluff Concept Plan to provide for dockside fueling and a second dry stack boat storage at the Big House Trax Anson Maria.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Want to add to that?
I think it's the same conditions as the previous.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Can move on to the next item, please. New Business, the Sora Wellness Street Naming Application, a request by Grandview Care for approval, a street naming application for proposed roads within the Sora Wellness Development Plan. Will, if you want to present that?
Here's what it is. I gotta recuse myself for this one also?
I wrote that on something else. Oh, yep, there it is.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. This is a little lighter note than the previous application. So we have a street naming application for Sora Wellness. This is a request by Grandview Care for approval of a street naming application. Planning Commission has not seen this plan, but there is an approved plan for an independent living facility within Palmetto Bluff?
Well, can we have a short recess, please?
Sure. You don't have to ask me.
So Madam Chair, it's just so, some of the noise in the background dies down.
Yeah, let it calm down a little bit.
If you want to entertain a motion for just a three-minute recess, in that way, we'll make sure we have at least four Planning Commissioners up there.
Oh, yeah. Entertain a motion for recess?
Motion for recess.
Is that it?
Second.
Okay. We'll recess for three minutes.
Minutes.
Are we counting?
Well, how many do they need?
Five.
What?
No, I'm just, it, I know you guys tell them bring extra street names just in case. And so they brought five and they need five.
Well, we, we tell them to bring extra street names so that they get through the vetting process with other municipalities. So all of these names have satisfied and been vetted by the other municipalities.
And yet, we have a New River Avenue, and we have a New River Boulevard, and we have a New River...
Oaks Circle. We also have, Archway Circle is recommended, but there's an Archdale Circle that exists. And again, I, you know, I know we've talked, Will. I don't know how these kind of get through like that. I know you told me that all the groups review them, but those are pretty close. Archway and Archdale Circle.
This case, they should have, we should have had a couple more names. Are you, you guys recommending?
Madam Commissioner. Madam Commissioner, so again, you know, these have all been vetted through all of the various, you know, E-911 operators. So for purposes of emergency management, these are all acceptable names.
Right. I know, like, the last time, there were some that were very close to other names. So that's why we didn't recommend those, approve those. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with these. While I look down there, now I'm looking here.
I would just ask, I mean, there's, there's a reason why it comes behind us. It's the final check, the final vetting before it gets done. And I would just ask staff in the future if we can make sure there are a couple extra names in there in case there's one or two that the commission is not comfortable with. Now, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but I, I'm not, there's no hill to die on here for me. But it just would, it just would help if there's an uncomfortable one in the future.
Noted.
I'm in the same place. If, if we're going to do our job, then they have to bring more, more names in case this comes up.
And it doesn't need to be 20 extra.
No, it doesn't need to be 20.
One of them did that, didn't they?
Yeah. So I guess we need to entertain a motion and...
Um, I motion to approve the application as submitted by the applicant.
Have a second.
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, and this is a public hearing as well. Do I need to ask for public comment?
This is another proposed, proposed amendments to the UDO, another one where we have the South Carolina statute that requires a public hearing. So we will have to open this up. There are, I think, one, two, three, three agenda items all in a row, but we could do just like we did with Palmetto Bluff, open it up for a single, single public hearing on those, if that's what you would prefer.
Okay, we'll open it for a single public hearing, and then we will recommend these separately? Then we would recommend them separately? Or is it just a...
That's how it's, yeah, that's how it's structured.
And I'm sorry, I have to defer to staff if they were going to present each one individually or present them kind of...
I will present all three together, and you can make three separate motions for each one.
Okay, and there are no public comments, so we don't need to worry about that?
Just out of an abundance of caution, have the, the motion to open public hearing, get the second, have the vote on public hearing, open it up for public hearing, do the first call, second call, third call. When no one steps up, close it.
Okay, I'll try this again. They have a motion to open for public hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance Amendments, and all three at the same time.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and then I have...
You need a vote?
Oh, may, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. And then I need to open for public comment?
So it is now, it is now open for public comments, so if you'll do the first call.
Okay, first call for public comment, second call, or close for public comment?
And then just do a motion to close public comment.
May I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
They have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, Charlotte.
All right, thank you.
And I'm sorry about that, Madam Chairwoman, that was, that was my fault.
You need to write me a list.
Somebody cut his mic off.
No, gladly.
A lot going on.
The, so there are three items relating to edits to the Unified Development Ordinance that have a relationship to historic preservation and including a relationship to the town's strategic plan. There are several initiatives that include aligning the local historic district with the National Register. And let me explain that quickly. The area that you see in green is the Old Town Bluffton Historic District. That's our local district. That does include a, the area in orange, which is our National Register District. So the thought there was to see whether or not that National Register District could be expanded a bit more to align with the green area. In doing so, we did a, an updated historic resource survey for the town in 2019 to identify whether that might be possible. That survey included a, a survey of the Buck Island, Smithsville, and Goethe Road corridors to identify whether or not there potentially may be more resources that are historic. And in that process of that survey, over 400 properties were reviewed by our consultant. And I'll talk about that a bit more in just a moment. The other initiative is proactive preservation of contributing structures. If you recall, we discussed this a couple of months ago. It moved forward to Town Council. Council didn't particularly like the way that it was structured, so we've restructured that ordinance a little bit to be more of a grant program. And then the third incentive would be for financial incentives, which I will discuss with you. Related to this is another UDO edit. It's not a, an initiative of the strategic plan, but it came up in the process of the other three, and that is to reconsider how we designate contributing resources. So I'll talk about all of these briefly and provide some highlights to you. So the three amendments tonight would be to Section 9.2, Terms and Definition. We have some new terms that we want to include, including definitions. And then we, we would need to update the applicable sections of the UDO. We do have a contributing resource section or structure section right now, which we want to rename contributing resources, a few amendments to that. And then we want to include the proactive preservation and maintenance of contributing structures as a new section to the UDO. So briefly here, there are seven terms here that we are either proposing be revised, new terms to be added, and one to be repealed. The most significant of these is our current definition of contributing structure. As I mentioned, the 2019 survey included over 400 properties. If we were to adopt that 2019 survey next week or in December is, is proposed without changing this definition, it would imply that the 400 properties that were surveyed were contributing structures, which they are not. So we do need to make a change to this existing definition, and this is the definition that is proposed. It will include all of the 2008 properties that are identified currently on our contributing structures map. That does include 82 structures and two of the coves, Hayward and Hughie Cove. We also include in this that it would include any new, any new structures or any other resources that the town might add. There is a reference here in our contributing resource definition, which is new. And the reason why I'm using the term resource, we don't have just structures or buildings. We have other things, such as the two coves that I've mentioned. So this will be a more comprehensive term to capture that. So we refer to our map as a contributing resource map. And as I've indicated here on the proposed definition, there will be a map that will be the official list, and that would move forward separately, not as part of the UDO, but it would be available to Town Council to adopt by resolution. Then we have a term here, historic resource. There will be some historic buildings possibly that are not within Old Town, that do not contribute to the Old Town Historic District, so that would be a new definition. And then, as I indicated, that there are some related amendments because of the new terms that we'll have to change if the, if the terms are approved. So that's an overview of the terms and definitions, the contributing resource criteria. Right now, we do reference only contributing structures. Again, there's potential that we may have objects or sites that we want to include as contributing, so we, there would be a change to that. We are refining the designation criteria. Any new contributing resources would have to have property owner approval, so there's, it wouldn't be possible for the town to designate structures without input from the property owner. We do want to include a refiner section. Typically, resources are 50 years or older. In certain cases, exceptional cases, they may be less than 50 years old, so there's some refinement there as well. And we've also indicated that the map would have to be updated if any resources were removed or added. So that's the overview of that section. I've included the criteria here. I'm not going to go through all of that, but you can see it's pretty extensive, 10. It tends to be a little bit redundant. We are proposing that the criteria be more in line with what you'd find for the National Parks Service in identifying a National Register property. And we've also included the fact that it should retain its integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. So there's a little bit of a higher standard here in designating a contributing resource. And then finally, this is something that we've reviewed before, the proactive preservation proposal. So as we previously indicated, that there would be a formal petition for this process, and the proactive preservation ordinance is intended to allow the town to intervene in situations where a contributing structure is showing deterioration, and the point is for the town to intervene early so that we can get that matter resolved and work with the property owner to create a preservation plan. So it'll be less formal than previously. This is intended to be a grant program. The conditions of neglect were a bit more extensive before, very specific, things like pulling away a chimney, maybe some structural issues, you know, peers may be deteriorating. So it's a bit broader now. One thing we have included is vegetative growth, if there's any potential overgrowth that may be occurring, to be able to help the property owner with that. We have removed the economic hardship provision as well, so it's not necessary. If, if the property owner is having some difficulty, pain, for whatever the requirements are, to bring the, the property up to an improved state, that that won't be necessary anymore. I know there is a concern on council about discussing financial issues publicly, and because this is now going to be a grant program, that will not be necessary. So the plan will actually vary by property owner and circumstance, so we will continue to work with property owners as is needed. So that really is an overview, very quickly, of all these three various amendments. There is the review criteria that has to be considered. There are five, including whether or not it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, which it is. There are actually two goals in the comprehensive plan related to providing financial incentives as well as a proactive preservation ordinance, so we're finally moving forward with that. It's a, you could say, best planning practice, as well as a sustainable one to preserve our older buildings. And then for the criteria three and four, they really don't necessarily have a direct relationship, and this does comply with the application's manual. So, moving forward, these will be reviewed by Town Council next week, and if they approve them, then moving forward in December for approval. If it is approved in December, they would be in effect January 1st. And then I've identified some other things related to preservation that are also moving forward, including adoption of the contributing resource map in December, the presentation of the 2019 Historic Resource Survey, and our grant programs, which will get at the incentives I mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Questions for Charlotte?
I do, I do. One of the comments you made, and at least I think I heard, was that you developed some of the verbiage from the National Historic Registry, is that correct? Is that inclusive? There's, the word feeling is in here, used several times, which I find to be an ambiguous term that would be awfully difficult to uphold in a court.
I, I actually, I'm kind of laughing because I knew that was going to come up. Yeah, because I absolutely felt, it is a little bit an odd word in this context, but it is actually used by the National Parks Service. And that means that any of the resources would embody the area, the era of significance, which individually a resource may not be terribly unique architecturally, it may not be associated with an event or a person, but the collection of the resources really contributes to the feeling and the character of the district, and that's why that word is used. So it's something we're taking directly from the National Parks Service.
I do not feel, okay. Is feeling defined? As, just as you've, you've just articulated what that means, it's a sense of place. Did, is that defined in here, feeling?
It's, no, it's not defined. It's not defined. I'm trying to defy where that was.
I can tell you it's under UDO Section 9.2, Define Terms, Contributing Structure. It mentions feeling, but I don't see where it says, under item four, but I don't see where it says...
It's there.
Yeah, and it mentions feeling, but I don't see where feeling is defined.
And like I said, I actually looked that up as well, because I did wonder about that particular term, and that is directly from the National Parks Service.
Is this something that the town, it feels is really important, feels, ha ha, is really important, that specific wording be used?
No, it's not necessary. But I'm going to have our historic preservationists comment on that.
Okay.
How do you feel?
I feel great. So according to the National Parks Service, they define feeling as a property's expression of the aesthetic or historic sense of a particular period of time. It results from the presence of physical features that, taken together, convey the property's historic character. For example, a rural historic district which retains its original design, materials, workmanship, and setting will relate the feeling of agricultural life in the 19th century.
Is there a possibility of referencing that in this document?
As a definition?
Yeah. Or where, or where concern or questions come up regarding definitions of where it refer to the National Historic Registry?
I, I think we can certainly provide a link to that, to this document for reference.
I, it would be my recommendation that that's, since obviously that's the benchmark, and I don't know that in the document itself, it references the National Historic Registry as the benchmark as to how this was, you know, this pattern was established, perhaps if we make that reference, that, I don't know legally if that covers us, but that way, at least there's a definition for what feeling is.
Feelings?
Yeah.
Well, I think, again, if, if I may, I know y'all don't want to hear me anymore, but...
We love to.
You posed a question to me, so...
I did.
The, as far as providing an additional, you know, definition, from a, sometimes from a legal standpoint, that makes a lot of sense, because, again, this ordinance is a restriction on property to a certain degree, and it will, if you have a contributing structure, you're not going to be able to develop it as fully as you may otherwise. But because this has to do with historic structures and contributing structures, which, you know, encompasses the certified local government program, the state, and brings in the national, the references to the National Registry, Register of Historic Places, it may, in my opinion, not be just entirely necessary. We have that definition as a federal, I understand it is a federal definition that we can rely upon, and we are using this, we have incorporated the federal definition, just again, provide that kind of, it seems like they want a very expansive definition, one that isn't, one that's flexible with time, so that you don't have to say this particular building is historic because it meets one of the, the four very, very clear criteria, but no, rather it contributes to the overall feeling of this historic district. So I think, I think it's important that we retain the flexibility of that term, but also, I don't know whether it's entirely necessary that we incorporate a specific definition. I'll have to look through the UDO. There may also be provisions in the UDO that say, in the event of an ambiguity, to refer to these materials. So I can look into that as well. And, but I do think, I mean, it's a good question. You're, you're right. Whenever we have to make determinations, we want specificity that we can rely upon.
Right.
And so I'll look into that and see if I can, we can figure something out there.
Okay.
And this is, our motion will be for a recommendation, correct? To Town Council?
I believe, I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is a recommendation.
So we can add that in the recommendation as to have you look into that, or...
And I can just look into it. If you don't want to have, if you don't want to put that into the recommendation, so it doesn't have to come back to y'all if there's an issue. I would say just let us look into it, and we'll see what we need to do and make sure that is adequately addressed.
Anything else?
Yeah. And this is under, this is Section 3.18.3.G, Application Review Criteria. Item F, the historic architectural and aesthetic features of the resource, including the extent to which its alterations or removal would be detrimental to the public interest. I wondered if we don't include environmental, so the historic architectural, environmental, and aesthetic features. So I didn't, because you mentioned, specifically when you mentioned the cove, that's what reminded me of things that are environmental in nature, which this, I mean, arguably could be considered historic. I just wondered if specifically making an allocation of, for environmental features might also be advantageous as we do this, or if maybe it's not necessary, maybe it's redundant, maybe it would cause lack of clarity, but I'm just...
I don't have that pulled up just at the moment to understand the specific comment.
What I'm trying to say is that if you're reviewing, if you're reviewing something, yeah, it, where, if some, if you, this item was removed, right? It, there's a detrimental effect to public interest. That's the criteria for which the application is being reviewed. And right now, it's referencing historic, architectural, and aesthetic features. I wondered if we don't add our environmental as a part of that as well?
It could be, because we do have sites included as a potential resource, so I, I don't see that as being inappropriate, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah.
To add that word. It may not be something that we apply in all cases, depending on the nature of the resource.
Right.
But if it is a site feature, perhaps it would be appropriate.
Yeah, I just wanted it to be something that maybe, I want a discussion that, that may be on the table, that's something that should be potentially added. I'm not saying that it has to be just something to consider and think about. Yeah, that feeling thing comes up several times throughout the course of these documents. One of the other things, so into the last, or this is item four on the agenda, which is the amendments to the Town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3, Application Processes to Establish Section 3.26, Proactive Preservation Maintenance. There's under attachment ones, conditions of neglect. One of the things that occurred to me as I was reading this was, you know, we're subject to storm damage here, you know, via hurricanes or whatever, and that can have varying effects on a property. I didn't know how, you know, if there's, even if there was fire or something that caused damage to the property, this isn't a negligent issue that would cause a conversation between somebody who, that has that historic property and the town. But with an advent of an event, how is that then addressed, you know, with the, with somebody that owns a historic or resource?
So I would assume it depends on the nature of the destruction. I mean, if there's potential for us to intervene and assist with reconstruction of whatever that resource is, if it can be reconstructed. And I don't know if, Richardson, if you want to say something? Sorry, I'm kind, still kind of thinking about your question a little bit.
Because it, I mean, it's pretty clear about what to do, what, it goes through and defines conditions of neglect and how it's processed. I just didn't know, because it doesn't, it doesn't address things that might exacerbate an issue or some, something that could have been caused by an event that wouldn't even have been a condition previous to that event, and how that's addressed and interfaced with the town with these historic structures.
So Commissioner Duncan, if I can try to address the, that question kind of broadly, and then a little bit more specifically. You know, anytime that there's going to be a fire or storm damage, ideally, there would be, you know, private homeowners insurance that would cover that and be able to bring this back to, you know, a certain state. But let's, let's just assume that there's not, because that's really what this ordinance is designed to protect against, is neglect or contributing structures failing, and so that we can no longer preserve them. The idea is not to limit it as to necessarily the root cause of the neglect, whether it is a chance occurrence due to, to fire or a storm, or whether it is due to, you know, years and years and years of, of neglect. It's, the idea that this, these contributing structures are such importance to the town that if, in the event that they can be preserved under a preservation plan, a reasonable preservation plan, that they will be. Now, obviously, if there's a fire that destroys, I would, I'm speaking off the cuff a little bit here. I haven't spoken to staff about this, but my presumption is if there's a fire that destroys 75% of a building, that there's not going to be a realistic preservation plan to be able to put into place that could be economically feasible for the applicants. But ultimately, this process and this ordinance provides that sort of dialogue. It opens up, opens that up to the applicant and to the town to kind of discuss these issues. So as far as taking into consideration storm damage and fire damage, I think that this does, and that's, that's why we've, or why staff has created this broad language around conditions of neglect, but also has it somewhat limited as to, you know, somewhat major conditions of neglect versus, I think, some of the other ones that have been brought up and some of the other ordinances, which are much more minor, have minor issues. So I hope that addresses your question.
Yeah, I think so. And then the last question that I had, the attachment three, is, was that in here just for reference as to what previ, what the...
It was, yes, we did previously have a demolition by neglect ordinance.
And we did, we did, you did eliminate the safeguards from undue economic hardship so that they're not...
We did.
Okay, great. That answers my questions. Appreciate it.
So I don't have anything to add, but I do have the motion available for you on each item, but there are the two kind of related items. I'm not certain, Richardson, how we'd like to handle that.
So Commissioner Duncan had mentioned two potential issues that may modify this motion to recommend. The first one was the use of the term feeling, and the second one was incorporation of the word environmental into one of the proposed ordinances. And I'm sorry, if you could, Commissioner Duncan, if you wouldn't mind identifying which precise ordinance that was, if you want to incorporate that into the rec, into your motion. So if it's a move to approve amendments, as stated up there, subject to adding the word environmental into section, whichever.
Whatever that...
So I believe that was the criteria one, so the, the one related to feeling would relate to motion one?
I think, this is, this is for the environmental. Were you wanting environmental added? Was that to the definition of...
That's to the designation of contributing resources, so that would be the second motion. And I've, Richardson, I've got a slide up there related to that.
That's the one with the feeling? Yeah, I'm just waiting for her to find it.
Complicated, so complicated. So nine, you're saying 9.2, so, because 9.2 appears in that first packet in, on the agenda, it would be item number two.
Yeah, item number two, Strategic Plan Initiative, third paragraph.
So, that's the, which one?
So that's why I'm, I'm just curious where, I'm just trying to check where we are.
So you were concerned about the word feeling, and that relates to the definition of contributing structure?
Yeah, feeling.
Which would be part of that first motion?
The feeling one is part of that first motion, yes, as is the environmental, uh, application criteria was within, within the contents of that first package.
So, the application criteria would relate to the second motion? The application process, designation of contributing resources?
The first motion goes with the first packet, the, I'm just, this is where I'm confused. There's three different items on the agenda. In the first item on the agenda of the three, that's where the contents of this occur.
Correct, yes.
But you're saying that the second, there's two motions associated with that one agenda item?
No, there's, there's three separate agenda items, so the terms and definitions, the, where you have a concern about the word feeling?
Yes.
Would be under motion one, and that relates only to the terms and definitions, which includes the revised definition for contributing structure, and the new contributing resource definition.
Okay, so then, the part where you're looking at the application, I'm sorry, the part where you're looking at the application criteria, while it's still within the first item of the, in this particular item of the agenda, is the second motion?
So, there are three different items on the agenda. The first agenda item is to amend certain sections of the UDO, primarily that have to do with the definitions of contributing structures. That's where we, we talked about the word feeling, that's in that section. The second item on the agenda?
Should we go ahead and do that motion while we're, while we know what it is?
Can you go back to motion one? As you can see on the screen, you have motion one for terms and definitions, and then the next one will have motion two, and then the next slide will have motion three. So if the feelings one is in this section, you just want to make sure that that condition is included in this motion, and then for the other items, that you would include those in each motion.
Yes.
So why don't we go ahead and do motion one, if we know that one's the one that has the definition?
Okay, but what I'm saying, and clearly, I'm not communicating or I'm not receiving something, in what should be motion one, which includes things beyond just definitions, it includes the application criteria, that's what?
The, the application criteria is in the second agenda item, so it would be in the second motion. So the application criteria is in section 3.25.
Correct.
But the application review criteria is section 3.18.3.G. This, this, I mean, I understand this, this says 3.25 over here, but in this first packet, that's where 3.18.3.G is located.
And, and I believe that the 3.18 changes are to change the existing terminology with the, the new terminology, so it's kind of encompassed as a definition, definition change. And then, when you get to the specific criteria as to the designation of a contributing structure, that's motion two. So, the first one really has to do with changing the definition of the contributing structures, and changing those sections throughout the UDO that refer to historic structures or contributing structures, and using this, this new unified definition. So that's motion, motion one. And then motion two is as to the application for designation of a contributing structure, and motion three is as to the proactive maintenance and the conditions of neglect that we had talked about. So, I, my recommendation, based off of what I've, what I've heard tonight, would be for the motion one to include the, that condition about feeling, looking into that. Motion two, to incorporate the language about environmental, and then motion three, just to proceed as, as proposed by staff.
Okay. I move to approve amendments to the Town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Table of Contents, Article Two, Administration, Section 2.2, Establishment, Article Three, Application Process, Section 3.18, Certificate of Appropriateness, Historic District, Article Four, Zoning Districts, Section 4.2, Zoning District Provisions, and Section 4.4, Conditional Use Standards, Article Six, Sustainable Development incentives, Section 6.3, this is all part of one motion?
Yes.
Sustainable Neighborhood Design, and Article Nine, Definitions and Interpretation, not, Section 9.2, Define Terms, as it related, as related to certain historic preservation-related terms and definitions. And, I would like to address, within the context of those sections referring to 9.2.4, under contributing structures, where feeling is mentioned, a review of that term to define, to better define that, to better define that term. And, under section 3.18.3.G, item F, the consideration of the inclusion of the word environmental to that term as well.
I believe the last part relates to the second motion?
Section 3.18 is listed in this motion.
Correct, but that, it relates to?
The definition.
Only to the definition, only to the terms. So we?
We do, we do have that motion, so if, if y'all want to have a second, and then a discussion.
A second?
Second.
And can we have a discussion? So?
Is it necessary to use the environmental in this motion, or does it cover, get covered by the second motion?
Out of a, out of an abundance of caution, I mean, and this, this sounds somewhat ridiculous, but because we're getting so, so bogged down in the different sections, let's, I recommend that y'all go ahead and keep it in here, and if it's not in here, if it's not in this motion, then it's not in this motion, and let's incorporate it in the second one as well. And if it's not in that one, then we've, a little bit of a belt and suspenders approach.
That's what I, that's, that's good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? No. Okay. For the second one, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the amendments to the Town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Table of Contents, Article Three, Application Process, Section 3.25, Designation of, of Contributing Resources. And I'd like to add that we examine where, and where it's appropriate to add the word environmental to this code.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And review the definition of the word feeling as appropriate within the context of this.
Has to be an amendment. End the motion.
Have to amend the?
So there was a, there was a first, and there was a second, if I recall?
Yes.
So there was a second, so it has to be a motion to amend the existing motion. And obviously, that would need a second, and then be approved, and then you would vote on the, on the?
Okay, let's go one thing at a time. A motion to amend the, the first motion?
So there is a, may I?
Yeah, you just do it. Go ahead.
So there is a, there is a motion on the floor to amend, a pending motion to incorporate the, a review of the use of the term feeling in Article Three, Section 3.25 of the UDO. Is there a second on that motion?
Who made the motion to amend?
I motion to amend.
I'll second it.
All those in favor on the motion to amend?
Aye.
With that being unanimous, there's still the motion, there's still that motion to approve the motion as amended.
May I have a motion, a vote?
Just a vote.
Just a vote to amend, or?
To, to adopt the?
To adopt the motion that has been amended.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay.
And now you have motion number three.
Last one. Motion three, anybody?
Just a point of clarification, Richardson. Can we, when we make a motion on something that's long like this, can we say, "I move to make a motion as presented by staff"?
Absolutely.
"I move to make a motion as presented by staff."
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. The next one is for New Business, New Riverside Village Commercial, Certificate of Appropriateness, a request by Narromore Associates on behalf of the owners of Avtech Partners for approval of a certificate of appropriateness highway corridor overlay. The project consists of buildings B, C, D, and E with the, within the commercial village portion of the New Riverside Village master plan, along with the associated landscape and lighting. The property is zone New Riverside PUD and identified by the tax map number in your packet, located south of May River Road, east of New Riverside Road, and the, and US Highway 170 traffic circle. Katie?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I'm trying to get Shay O'Brien, who's here with the applicant, on the screen real quick. I believe we have my cues here on behalf of the project as well. I will try and make this as brief as possible, as soon as I get it all loaded here. So tonight, as Chairman Denmark said, this is an application for buildings B, C, D, and E within Phase One of the New Riverside Village development. It is part of Phase One, and is on two different parcels. They're both located at the corner of the southeast of South Carolina Highway 170 and 46 intersection. You can see that on the screen here. So we've got the traffic circle. If you were to go left off the screen here, you'd be going towards Savannah, you'd be going towards Historic District, that we just talked about. If you went right here, and then this goes up to 278, north is at the top of your screen in this map. For the master plan, I have turned it sideways, so the words are a little wonky, but that was because I wanted to make sure that you understood the orientation as you entered the development. So you've got the traffic circle here, and this is the master plan, which was approved by town council. And then I've overlaid this in approximately the same location. I would like to say this is, in fact, a hack job, and someone with power, or, not using Word could probably do a much better job at that. But this is the orientation as you would come into the development. You'd come in, down here is the full access, up here is a right in, right out, and you'll be able to see that a little bit better here on the screen. So I flipped it, so that north is up again. Here is that main accessway, and then the right in, right out is up here. So the traffic circle is at the top of your screen. The first building that we are going to look at, so again, this is just a reminder, because we do not do certificate appropriateness too much, we are looking at the landscaping, lighting, and architecture only for the site. All of the infrastructure is done through the development plan process, and that'll be something that is reviewed separately, and has been reviewed at this point. So Building B is the one with the red circle around it, and these are the elevations. I have tried my very best to label them as to what it would be facing in the parentheses next to it. So the top one is the south elevation, or the left elevation, which is facing Building C. Building C is this middle building. Building D is at the bottom of the screen here. Where's my mouse? Here we go. So, Building B, C, D, and E over here. So, this faces Building C, the north elevation faces towards May River Road, the west elevation faces towards New Riverside Road, and the east elevation faces towards that Central Park that you see here, and the pond that will be beyond it as part of the development plan. I've then blown those up a little bit more, so you can see each elevation, because they are very small on the screen. And I'm going to flip through them on the side of quickly, on the front end, and then we can go back to any of the elevations, just so that we can get through it and see everything before I slow down here. And then this is the west and east elevations for Building B. Here's the site plan showing Building C, so this is the front here of the building, facing the pond. Your floor plan for Building C. And then, south faces Building D, which is the bottom of the page, or the south side of that. North faces Building B, which was the one we just saw. West faces towards New Riverside Road, and then the east side faces that pond and park. And this actually is the one that truly fronts the pond and the park, the green space, and you can see that with the columns here along the front. This is Building D, which has the north arrow, again, I've pointed it always up. Let me skip to Building E, I'm sorry. This is Building E, which is the one that is more of an out parcel to the other buildings, it's kind of diagonal. So the southeast corner faces Building D, the northwest faces New Riverside Road, southwest faces the internal road, and then the northeast faces Building D, which is that, the strater of the two edge buildings there. I don't know what happened to my Building D here, it's concerning. Sorry, here's Building D, which faces the park on this side. On the west side, you're facing Building E, which is that smaller out parcel type building, as well as New Riverside Road. South is facing the internal road to the development, and then the north is facing towards that Building C, which is that center building there. Here is the east and west elevations. The north and south elevations, south is at the top, north is at the bottom here. And then Building E, which we just took a look at here, is that out parcel building. Why is it doing this to me? Sorry, my slides have somehow gotten twisted here. Here is the materials and colors for the site. So you can see the materials on the right-hand side here, and then a rendering of some of those buildings to your left. They are all labeled throughout the packet as what color is going to be specifically on, on each part of those elevations, as well as just this rendering, since this does not include all of the, the faces in color detail, which is not necessary. This is the landscape plan for the site, so as you can see, again, I've got north facing up here. You have Building C in the middle, E was that out parcel, D is down here, and then B is the L-shaped one at the top. And then I've zoomed in just a little bit, so that you could see it a little bit closer, as well as the planting schedule on the left-hand side here. It is still very small. We can zoom in if we need anything specifically on here to take a closer look. This is the lighting plan, which again, is very small, but I have zoomed in to the best of my ability, with it still being on the page, and then taken a screenshot of that lighting table in the top corner, just so that it's a little bit more easy to read, and then gone through the review criteria. I am going to go through these quickly. The first one is that it's in compliance with Article Five Design Standards. It does not, it's not applicable, since this is in a planned unit development. The second one is that it's in compliance with the Development Agreement, Concept Plan, Master Plan, Subdivision Plan, or any other agreements and plans that are applicable. So quickly, the landscape plan, the master, I'm sorry, the concept plan requires a landscape buffer of at least eight feet wide, maintained around the structure in any parking or driving areas, except for loading areas. This is, this has been done for most of the buildings. The place where there is an exception seen is on Building E, which is that small out parcel building, is what I keep calling it, the out parcel building, though. It has landscaping on the side that faces New Riverside Road, however, the front of that building faces a parking area that there is very minimal plantings. There are, I believe, six, five sable palms in three-foot square wells along the parking area, but it doesn't meet the intent of that eight-foot wide planting as the other buildings have. For the lighting, the first one is about LED lights. When this code was written, LED lights were not something that were commonly used, if used at all. This was approved in 1999 with it revised in the year 2000. So that's something that we see a lot. It is something that the Planning Commission has to address, but it is not something that staff is very concerned with as long as it's still meeting the illumination levels, which that table lays out before you. So that is something that we see quite frequently. The next item is that the illumination levels were provided for the street areas. However, they weren't provided for the walking areas and the pedestrian areas surrounding the buildings, which will need to be included because they are numbers that are specifically laid out by that table. If the Planning Commission finds it appropriate, staff can ensure that those levels are met. It's a fairly black and white, it does or does not. So hopefully, we can take a look at that one at a staff level if you all find that appropriate. For the architecture, the the elevations for the landscape screening wall that's shown on the landscape plan for Building, the L-shaped building, which is Building B, was not provided. And the dumpster enclosure, that is, again, something that we need to see any structure that comes forward. So just to ensure that the materials and the configuration of that meets the standards, which we have in, I believe it's Attachment 6 of this packet. And then the colors, the tabby stucco has been noted as TBD. While this is typically something that is a neutral color, I have seen versions of it that are bright red or neon green or something of those likes. I doubt that is the case here. However, I just need that to be clarified in order to feel comfortable with that. The last one for the architecture is that the architectural style should be reflective or at least compatible with the architectural styles which exemplify the unique character of the Low Country region. Further, long unarticulated blank facades are inappropriate to the design. The front or east elevation and the right or north elevation of Building B contain areas where the material changes on an even plane. The concern with that is that traditionally, no more than two wall materials would ever be visible on one exterior wall. This is something that we see not only in our Historic District, but also in traditional construction patterns, which is another reference material that we use for our Unified Development Ordinance. But it is something that is very implemented in Low Country vernacular. With the Building B, you'd be looking at a wall that is flat, like the one behind you. And halfway through it, it would change from a vertical hardy material to a stucco material without an interior corner change. So when walls are offset, it's plausible, I'm sorry, I'm tapping the mic here. It's plausible for that material to change, but when it's flat like that, it appears that it's just been applied on the surface and it gives off a more fake or unarticulated appearance. And so that's what the comment there is taking a look at. And then for the other requirements, and again, I will slow down, go backwards, do whatever you guys need for this to be clarified. The screening for the rear elevation of Building D, which fronts the main access road, does not have any screening for the utilities. And so some sort of visual impact mitigation to screen some of those mechanical equipments has been requested. And the landscape plan for that shows it, but it doesn't align with what the elevation shows on that specific elevation. And I think that's the only elevation which that's the case, so.
Which is that D?
It is Building D, and it is the road that fronts the main access road. So it's Building D is this bottom one here. And it's this elevation down here, which this is the lighting plan, not the landscape plan, but.
One that's almost 200 feet long.
That's the...
I'm just noting that building's almost 200 feet long with very little elevation change.
I believe so.
That's the rear elevation, number two?
It is the rear elevation of it, but this is the main entrance to the development. So it is less of a highway corridor and more of a, I mean, it is, still falls within the highway corridor because all landscaping within this parcel is reviewed. All architecture is. However, it is not facing directly May River Road. It's facing that main access, though, which is the full access point, both right and left in, right and left out. For the master plan, the finding for that is that the trees that were identified on the natural resource, they have been marked as protected on there. So they have, they have made sure that they attach that. And then the other item that falls back to the master plan is that the UDO Administrator has determined that the buildings could be combined. So the master plan shows the use of five buildings and seven buildings in the New Riverside Village, but five where there are three in this version of the plan. So Building B was two different structures and Building D was two different structures that had been combined. And they said that this is, that the buildings may be combined and still be in compliance with the master plan as long as the provision is met, that they still appear to either be separate buildings through breaks in the facade and their architecture detailing, or be of similar scale to those which were approved in the master plan. So they still maintain that commercial village feel rather than a longer strip-type building, strip-center-type building feel along the elevations so that it was similar to what the intent behind Council's master plan approval was.
I feel this meets that, sorry.
I feel that most of the elevations, and again, this is a feeling word, so most of the elevations have met the intent of this. Building C does a really great job of keeping this, as well as Building E. And Building B has come a long way to meet that. When you look at the, probably easier to flip out here. So Building B here has come a long way from the initial versions of it, where this portion here does, can you see my mouse? Yes, okay. This elevation does a great job where it has this larger piece that sits proud of the rest of the structure. It does have a little bit of articulation here where they've raised the roof and have some setback here along with another pitched roof at the other end of the structure. It does, because it has the L shape in it, it breaks up the length of that when you're looking at it. So somebody who's standing at the corner here is going to look and not see this whole structure because of how far back it is set. And the same with if you're standing on the other corner, you'll see this portion of it, which it does appear bigger from this corner. But you'll still see it as one building kind of set back from another rather than seeing it as one long, unarticulated, long blank facade or mass, as the code calls it. So this one has gone a really long way. There's also this addition of, and you can see it fairly well on the floor plan here. The, it's very small here. So right here, you can kind of see there is a L-shaped dent in the building, where that has a gate, actually. So it is not internal. They've made the hallway for the access point to be an external walkway so that somebody standing outside of the gate, it looks like it is physically two different buildings. And once you get into that gate, you realize that as you walk back, it's a dead end for the staff to access it, for things like that, rather than a pedestrian who's outside the gate and sees it as just an empty space there. So that does break up the facade there. Building, that's Building B. So Building D is the one that has a little bit more of a challenge with this. They have also broken up using that same technique, which has been helpful here. So on the elevations, this bottom corner here, it has a pitched roof, and then it goes to the flat roof back here and has that break in the facade with the gate. So again, on this half of it, it does still appear there. And this is the side which struggles a little bit with the articulation. So if you look at the heights of it. It's out of order. You can see this one on the third elevation down here. This is where that break is. So the pitched roof sits far behind this flat-roofed area with the parapet. And you'll see it right here is that little gated area that makes this appear as though it's a separate structure. And then this is the front elevation. And this is where some of those challenges with the material changes on the flatter elevations come into play. But this portion here does a very good job of setting it off. So they have come a long way from the very first version. We've been talking this through with their architects for quite some time, and they've made some substantial changes to it. I hope I've semi answered your question. The next one is the deeds, covenants, and instructions. They are the declarant for it, so they have, by signing the application, done that. And then town staff has found that it does, in fact, meet all of the requirements for the application manual. They submitted a complete package, so that covers that. We do have the applicant here to talk on it. Just in order to make sure I cover all of my bases, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve the application with conditions, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. And when doing so, they need to take into consideration the requirements of Section 3.17.3 of our Unified Development Ordinance, which is where it lays out the requirements for the certificate of appropriateness highway corridor overlay. And then I have summarized those conditions here on the screen. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant is here to speak on behalf of the project. I believe we have Mike Hughes here, as well as Shay digitally. Thank you so much.
Does the applicant want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tex, I didn't even see behind me.
That's all right.
We also have Tex here.
My name is Tex Small, S-M-A-L-L. I live at 2306 Palm Boulevard, Isle of Palms. And my company is Avtechs Commercial Properties. And we are the master developer of the horizontal portion of the development out there right now. And we are also the developer of the commercial village component of that. We're very proud of what we've come up with in terms of the overall master plan. And I think we've gotten excellent reception from the town. And I want to say to Katie and Mr. Icard that this process on these particular buildings has gone on for over 12 months. We've created six different revisions that we've submitted to the town. And the last one was in September. And they came specifically at suggestions that Mr. Icard had, so at the final. So all of these inputs with everybody has been very helpful to get us to the place where we are today. The theme of this particular commercial village is that it is retail. It is going to service the communities out there right now who lack services. And it is going to provide a sense of place and congregation. As you know, the town park that sits in the middle of it has a walking path around two lakes. And those two lakes will be fishing lakes, one of which will have a dock. And it will be hardscaped. It is fully landscaped and all. So the point of the commercial village was to put everything to focus on the activities that were going around the park and look at the park. So those doors open up onto a green area that's almost a half acre in the middle. And all the retail doors open up onto that area. So we expect a tremendous amount of walking participation within the retail area. We expect restaurants. We expect to have doctors' offices and a number of other things that are being looked for by the community out there. So I don't want to spend any more time than it's late already, but I'm willing to answer any questions that you have. And we certainly would adapt the necessary criteria that Katie referred to for the landscaping and the lighting and anything else. The palette itself is earth tone. We use Old Town. We use Moreland. We use other areas here in town to determine what the materials ought to be, Buckwalter being the third one. So if you looked at those areas and the earth tones and the materials, that's exactly what we are using as well. Any questions?
Start? That's first.
Not right now. Not yet.
You do, or you don't? Wait, not me and Kathleen? First, Kathleen?
I thought Katie did a nice job with the staff report. You covered a lot of what I saw. I have, well, one question I have is this little notch that is nearby, that smaller green space more towards the, it's the north portion of the property. It's not striped as parking. The site plan will...
I think the area you're referring to is it's a loading zone.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, it's not, there's no parking there. It's a loading zone. And it's specifically designed, they needed to have that. And then, so that way they can pull vehicles over to the side. They're not, that way they're not blocking any parking spaces and then load and unload from there.
I mean, okay. I'm having a bit of a hard time with that being the first thing that you see when you drive in there, but that is a secondary entrance. At least, it's not the primary entrance. But that's, as you would turn that corner into the property, that's the first thing you see, is that loading area. Additionally...
Can y'all tell us?
Initially, it was a dumpster right there, so.
Yeah, I was glad it wasn't a dumpster.
Yeah.
Where is the entry, like where are the prominent entries? Can you go back to that map?
Yes. So this right here, if you look at the site plan, this is the full entry down here. And then the right in, right out is here, which means people coming in would be coming from New Riverside Road and people coming in from this way. I'm sorry, they'd be leaving, going towards the traffic circle, coming in from New Riverside, going out towards the traffic circle, but they wouldn't be coming in from the traffic circle.
That green space that's adjacent to there, this is not a hang-your-hat-on kind of issue of making an issue. But, and I can see you've got the landscape wall. I'm not sure I understand the nature of it, if it's just a step wall, seat wall, you know, if it's recessed down or goes up, I'm not sure. But that's quite an opportunity, if you have any of those retail spots, to be able to utilize that space. The way the landscaping is addressing it kind of feels like it was more layered towards people driving in rather than being something that was more pushed out and addressed the building itself. Like, I think that would be a huge opportunity to have an outdoor place to sit. And I'd love to see specifically, like, trees more pushed out to the west side to provide shade on the green space. Like I said, I'm not, it's not a make or break, just a, something to consider.
Architect is here, and he has specifically identified those two areas for seating in the green area.
Okay.
And he has something that I was unfamiliar with. He had a term in there, and he would have been here last week. And is Shay, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Can you comment on those seats and what you did in that little area back there?
So the whole idea was that is, as opposed to the front common area, which is for gathering, this area back here is more for reflection. So we screened the backs of those buildings with a six-foot-high tabby wall, and integrated into those walls are two custom covered benches. And the whole idea is that that's a place that you go, you know, for quiet. So we were trying to change, create a different kind of space by creating more public space, and also help screen the approach to that building.
The six-foot wall in that location would tend to me, I mean, I get that this is basically the back of house on that building, but it creates a definite sense of separation between that and where the pedestrians would be coming from, which is the building, that six-foot wall. I appreciate the six-foot wall from a standpoint of blocking the back of house to the vehicular traffic, but I'd love to see that more integrated, because even with the back of house for a pedestrian, you've got clever ways, you can kind of screen that on a site-level scale. But I'd love to see that more integrated, so that you could kind of out the back and be a part of that reflective space. I love the idea of that. It's just maybe I might...
Right now, it's very secluded.
Yeah, you feel like you're kind of stuck between a wall and some landscaping, and you're actually more a part of the street than you are actually a part of the building experience, from my perspective.
Well, I agree. I agree.
If you look closely, we stop that screen while shy one storefront on either side. So it isn't the length of the building on either wing of the wall. So it does kind of pause to break and go back to an activated storefront that's still not back of house to allow it to gracefully turn the corner. So it's not monolithic or obtrusive as you might think.
Well, I think, though, it being, I appreciate that you're trying to disguise the back of house, but it does feel a little secluded from the rest of the pedestrian activity. Not sure how you would incorporate that.
Well, the point of it, stopping short of the end of the building is to open up to an activated storefront and a sidewalk.
So where's the service?
So I just want to point out that it's not screening the entire park.
Where's the service to these...
Can you say that again?
Where's the service to these buildings? Because if that's back of house, and you're trying to incorporate that, that's, and I know you're saying that's a storefront, but that's still back of house. Like, where's the...
No, in that case, it's not, and it'll have to be programmed that way, but everything is forced, and it's going to be a push to the inside corner, and it kind of progresses outward from the inside corner.
Remember that the loading area is right at the end of the long section, then you unload and take it up behind the wall and into the various retail.
No, I mean, we understand that. It's the pedestrian connection that doesn't seem to...
Do you have a picture of the bespoke roof over the benches that are in the green area?
Sort of.
Yeah, we've got that rendered, and you can see how it stops short to allow pedestrians to go through the green and not be dead-ended by that wall, activate a storefront, turn the corner seamlessly. So I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, we've identified that and addressed it through one of the several revisions we've made.
So where is the service for that building, that end cap?
Well, it's going to have to, like, that's going to have to be programmed, where you're going to have deliveries hand-trucked through a glass door. There's no way around it. It's the only way to activate that storefront on that facade.
Are you asking about, like, HVAC?
Yeah, just any kind of service. I mean, there's storage, there's trash, there's mechanicals, there's all kinds of things that go onto a building. And if we have three sides to this particular one, whereas the other ones look like they're hidden behind a wall, so obviously service things would be accessed behind there, but these end ones are three-sided, so that's why...
HVAC is on the roof. So what we're trying to screen here are just a few gas services for restaurants and electrical. That's mostly the utility, all of which can be painted to match the building, but we still wanted to screen them, so it doesn't read back of house. So HVAC is up on the roof, screened by the different roof elements or parapets, and then we have, you know, electrical panels and select gas manifolds. Other than that, you're just trying to not have what looks like a dressed-up facade receiving deliveries regularly.
So is there any place where the HVAC locations are noted on a plan so that we can see them in reference to where those roof lines are?
We have them, I mean, they're set in the center, and most of this roof is covered with some kind of either parapet or mansard, and we're very aware that they're not going to be able to be visible once we get this tenanted and identify what HVAC unit goes exactly where.
Katie, what is the rule or the code about the roofs and parapets as far as, and mansard roofs? Do we have mansard roofs?
It is on the about third to last page of the sixth attachment to the staff report, and I unfortunately don't have the whole thing, but it is three-sided mansard roofs and flat roofs without a putament are inappropriate materials, and I can find it if I can...
So you did mention mansard, so where's that?
Well, I'm using mansard as a blanket term. Actually, what we do is clip a gable, but it's effectively a mansard.
So for instance, on the hipped roof, if we're looking at this front elevation, Building B, on the left, like, where, what happens up in that roof if there's, if the utilities are up there? I mean, that's a hipped roof.
Are you talking about the two-story porch part?
I suppose that's what, yeah.
Like the corner, the main corner element?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, that's a full 3D roof.
Okay, so... That's what I'm, so I'm trying to figure out what the roofs are doing, because we don't...
It goes over the outdoor seating area, so it becomes an obvious place for gathering, dining, and we plan to have a mural in each one of those raised elements that are two-story. The mural will be reflective of the Low Country heritage, and we've got a professional artist out of Charleston that's going to do it.
So going back to your original, I don't know that the pedestrian park that you're calling it is really what that's going to be.
Yeah, I question its actual functionality and the effectiveness of that pedestrian experience there.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, you can landscape it, but I don't think it's necessarily a pedestrian-friendly park.
Yeah, yeah. It's intended to be per the conceptual master plan.
Right. So, I mean, I think landscaping will be fine, but...
There's clearly an area in which we wanted to soften with landscaping against the wall in the back of that L-shaped area. But as far as parks are concerned, there's a half-acre park in addition to the five-acre, six-acre town park on this 35 acres.
That area was never intended to be a park or programmed as a park.
Okay.
So it's just grass and landscaping.
Well, we landscape it so anybody comes in, it, they... Back of the house. And I will say that the number of visits... They'll exit that way every time to get to the roundabout.
So just on the master plan, where that L-shaped building is, it's going to be right here, and the corner of what is labeled Building A on the screen here is what that green space has now become. And then this is that triangular shape portion of green that you're seeing on the landscape plan for it, and I can flip back to it in a second, which is the buffer for New Riverside Road. And then this is the in front of Building C green space, and then that big park that he was talking about with the two ponds and the sidewalks that go around it. So on the site plan, there is a sidewalk that goes around the... Gone. So there is a sidewalk that goes in front of the loading area here and the parking area here, which would access this park. And then the sidewalk that runs back here is primarily, and probably wholly used for, besides the odd kid on a skateboard, will be used for employee access and loading zone here, where the door-goers, I guess, and users, the shoppers, the humans who aren't working here, they'll likely be on these sidewalks here, but not utilize this, the portion behind the wall. That's for the wizard.
Can I, can I also, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but also remember that this came through as Phase 1 previously, it was approved. So the landscaping plan for all of the road infrastructure has already been approved. So the focus, what we're really focusing on is the architecture of the building, the lighting, the minimal amount of additional landscaping immediately around the building. So I just want to make sure that we're focusing on the request and not deviating from that.
All I was going to say, from my limited architectural perspective on this, I do like the fact that when you turn right into the neighborhood there, the first thing you're seeing is green space, not the back of the building. So I think they did a good job at that. Whether it functions as a park or not, I can't speak to that, but probably won't, but visually it'll be appealing.
Well, I'll comment on the architecture, maybe that'll give you some time.
I had still a couple more. Well, you can, I mean, the architecture is of significance, so go ahead, why don't you go ahead and do that? That way...
Well, tag team.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. So I guess if we want to look at Building D first, because that's, I guess, the biggest one, the longest one. It's kind of a general statement. I feel like you still need some work on the massing. You say village, it's commercial village, village, fill. Looks like a strip center that just put materials on. There's a lot going on, and I know you were trying to divide up the spaces, but it, I don't know, I feel like the massing is still really long, especially on Building D, if it was broken up differently. It's just flat, because you're only bumping out a little bit here and there. There's just, there's a lot of elements on these buildings, and I don't know if y'all had looked at simplifying anything, or if you thought that by adding so many things it would break up the mass. And then I had concerns of proportion of, like, some of these columns, like on those gable elements, they just look very thin for the height. Yeah. And then I just don't know how some of these things go together, because they're all so different. Like, each piece is different, and I don't know how it all works as a, as a design together if it's one building. I don't know, I just feel like there should have been something that architecturally says that, you know, we're together, but we have these different elements, the scale, the massing, the materials, the amount of materials. I don't know, that's why I just, I think this building needs the most work, just because of that length. That's that, before we go to a different building.
Well, my concern, and this is a general comment that I found in the architecture, and I'm not an architect, so this is not my wheelhouse at all, so I lean heavily on Amanda, but the, the left and right foundations, as they were labeled in the documents I received, which tend to, there's the sides, essentially, but the sides seem to face kind of these access points going through. They feel awkward, I think, which is kind of what you're reflecting. Even some of the front elevations feel unbalanced proportionally speaking, like, from left to right, it feels like it's really big on one side, and then it just kind of shrinks down small, and there's a little bit of a taller element, but it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel balanced to me. Again, not architect. And because I can't see the HVAC in relationship to this, I don't know how those really screen those service areas, and if they really do the functional job. Additionally, I'm concerned that the elevation of New Riverside Road may make those service areas on top of the roofs more visible, because I don't know how the elevation compared, of New Riverside Road compares with the elevation of where these service areas are going to be on the building. I just don't know if you can see that, because I don't know what's screening them, and I don't know where they are, and I don't know the heights of things. So all of that concerns me a little bit, a lot.
So are those parapets, like, for instance, if we're looking at the front elevation north, Building D, like, where would the ceiling and the parapet, you know, where would that start and stop, the roof and the parapet?
Which area?
Like, Building D, the...
Right.
The flat roof area, the parapet areas. Like, where are we, what is the scale of where the ceiling would necessarily stop? Go over to the left, Katie.
The interior ceiling?
Go to the dimensions to the left.
Your screen area is what she's asking.
That one?
Yeah, I wanted to see, like, it doesn't tell you, but the heights as far as, like, how high are these parapet walls?
Approximately four to five feet.
From...
From the top of the first floor.
That's the top of storefront, but that's the window. That's the top of parapet of what...
All of, in the commercial retail, almost all of your units or packaged units in there in the middle of the roof. You're not going to see them.
Even if they're on the edge of the roof, I do commercial HVAC for a living. They won't pass code if they're visible from the roof.
That's right.
So the inspector won't allow it to...
Okay.
We're going to do it to code, but sure.
I know Richard won't...
That's not my wheelhouse, so it was just a concern.
Yeah, Richard won't let it happen, I can tell you that. Some of the other stuff I'm real concerned about, that one I'm not.
Well, and then just even the balance of these side profiles as you're coming into the property, I mean, that's like the first, a lot of these, that's the first thing you see from a lot of these access points, and they just feel awkward. So I don't, again, I don't know how to fix that, but it's...
No, I think that it's unfortunate that we don't have the current master plan up there. Very helpful to have the real master plan up there.
This is not...
That is the approved, that is the approved master plan that's up there.
Yeah, but we've changed the road from the highway, and we had to make modifications.
But has the building, but the buildings...
No, I just wanted to show the overall green space on how these buildings relate. I agree, that was the original master plan, there's no question about that. I'm trying to say, why did we look into that courtyard with these buildings? And because, and if anybody has been out there, you can see it, they are today. You can see it all graved, and the pads are there and everything else, and they look right over into the park and into the lakes and...
And I think that's a good thing, and I don't think that's the question as far as, I think that you do, you want to focus on the courtyards and the pond and all of that, but you also don't want to forget about the other sides.
Oh, no.
So that's the concern, is what are you seeing when you drive down the road? Because you're not just seeing the courtyard side, you know, you're going to see the others from the other approaches. So that's what we're just saying, if there's another way to disguise some of these things. For me, it's like, I just feel like my word in my head is simplify. There is a lot of things, it's just very busy, and I don't, I don't know how to tell you what to do, but I think the massing, if some of these pieces were broken down just a little more... broken down just a little more, there was a different depth, instead of a foot or whatever, 16 inches, if it was a little deeper here and there recessed, to help actually distinguish, well, this is a building type, here's your, you know, over time, it would have been added to this, and then you'd have this. But right now, I don't feel like any of it, I feel like it's just, like, put on there as a face. Does that make sense?
I thought it was getting up, and he took a red pen and put it to these plans in the fifth edition. And he, he said, pull it out, push it in, and do it. And we did that. Now, it may not show up on this little tiny scale and all, but I hope you've got the overall plans and the latest ones, so.
And then.
It should show.
And you did push it a little.
And you're saying, push it more, so.
Yeah, to show an actual massing. This massing would be this, it would have this roof and this material, and it would follow it around, instead of, here's a material, here's another material, here's a material, another one, another one. Like, some cohesion amassing.
Madam Chairman, if I may, and it seems as though you guys have a lot of questions and concerns, and it's up to the applicant as to if they would like to potentially, you know, continue this request, have it tabled to give an opportunity. However, I would say that if you do that, that you provide direction as to what you are looking for in order to, to, to give the applicant an idea of what to provide. To just say, well, we want you to come back with something different, it's not appropriate. You need to be pretty specific as to what you're requesting, so that way they can, you know, update the plans accordingly. Or, if you like, you can make it to where it's approved with a certain condition, that it's, you know, on a staff level, that they are then required to make the necessary changes, and then allow staff to then use that as, you know, the deciding factor of, you know, finishing that approval process, so that way they can start moving forward with the development. So, again, if you decide to move forward with approving with conditions, and you want staff to, to use that, provide specific detail as to what you are expecting us to be seeing when we are approving.
Okay.
I have a couple more things I'd like to address. Katie, I have a question for you. Regarding foundation plantings around the buildings, I saw the eight-foot foundation planting requirement, but is that only on the front of the buildings? Is that on all sides of the buildings? Is that only, only some of the buildings?
That is. A landscape buffer of at least eight feet wide should be maintained between any structure and any parking or driving area except for loading areas and areas where drive-through facilities are utilized, which there are none in this one. This space is to be reserved for plant material. Other than exist, either existing or planted, no such space is required at the rear of the building, but it is encouraged. Sidewalk and handicap ramps may be placed adjacent to the buffer on either side. The buffer may be penetrated to provide access to the buildings, and is not required in loading areas. As proposed, Building E is the, the area that is of the most concern. And that's on page two of my staff report?
And the only, and the only loading area is, is the, is the only loading area, the one that's up here on the north side of the property by that small green space, or?
The, the only, the only truck loading area is there. However, while it doesn't necessarily have a truck loading area, all businesses are required some sort of, I guess it's perceived.
Accessibility.
Perceived loading area, which is typically at the rear of the building. The landscape plantings, when you look at the landscape plan, if I can get to it. Hey, I hope I don't block you off when I make this full screen. So you can see the planting areas here with the access. There are a lot of doors and windows on these buildings, which is wonderful for visibility purposes. So you can see the planting boxes that are eight feet wide here. So this is on this side. They've got grass area that's on, there's more plantings here, here, here. This one has the sidewalk on the inside of it, but there is the green space between the parking areas. So it runs perpendicular on the side of the building, then is the landscaping. So this building here does an excellent job of that. This one, again, it has the walkway, which is parallel to the building on the inside of this, but you've got massive green space. And then you have the palm trees here, which this one has a very short side elevation here, but the back is the loading area for this, or the rear of the building, which is the other area, which it is permitted to not have. And they have provided those palm trees, which are in the, they're not the ones in the islands for the parking. And then you can see, again, those big landscape boxes along this building here. Building E, which I've zoomed in a little bit here, has the front elevation is, is labeled as this one here, which faces the parking lot. And then the left side is here, one, two, three, four, five little palm trees in their little three-foot boxes, is what's there, what we're looking for is, is similar to these, where it's got those planting beds that help incorporate more green space into those foundations and soften that buffer from the, from the parking area there.
Hi, this is Mike Hughes with Thomas &amp; Hutton. Regarding Building E, we do have, we submitted something, I think after the comments were raised, that corresponded to the building. We do have foundation plantings on three sides. The only side we don't have foundation plantings is actually where the front door is, and part of that's because of the accessibility to have the sidewalk when you turn the corner. So if we, there's an eve or an awning that actually protrudes out over the sidewalk, which takes up a fair portion of it. And then also, to get the ADA accessibility from the sidewalk, to turn the corner, you kind of turn towards the building. So the portion facing kind of diagonally up with the ADA parking in front of it, that's really the only place we haven't had the full planting strips, and then also we've got the boxed palm trees framed out on the sidewalks. And then again, another thing you don't get to see is that the right-of-way was already approved for landscaping through COFA. So we also provide a supplemental drawing that showed what was already approved for the streetscape, so you get the full picture of not just what's inside the village, but also the additional plantings that are done within the right-of-way.
And then what, specifically along that main entrance near Building E, do you know, because I don't, I don't think I saw a plan for that. Do you know, or Katie, can you eliminate what is happening in that right-of-way space?
So this is not, this is the right-of-way space he's speaking of with the additional plantings?
Yeah, that's what I want to know. Where, what, what's planned for that?
I'd have to go back to the approved landscape plan that was done for the right-of-way.
I mean, because this is, I mean, main entrance, first building you see, and there's nothing on. If the right-of-way showed something of interest, and it may not be necessary to do more than palm trees, but I don't know what it looks like.
I'd have to go back to the plans that were approved. Excuse me?
It would be my inclination to.
Landscape plan for the right-of-way has already been approved by the planning commission.
Right. I can say.
But you're saying additional may be required if it's not.
Right, if it's just turf, I just don't know, I don't have any idea what it is, and so I want to make sure that that building is dressed with landscape in some capacity at the main entrance of this complex. That's all, that's all I'm saying, and I don't have enough information here to determine that.
Yes, ma'am. I can say that the landscape plan for the right-of-ways was approved to the standards, which are in the Attachment 6 of this. So there were street trees planted along the elevation, as well as a mix of turf and, and bushes. There's, I don't know the number exactly off the top of my head, because I'm good but not that good, of trees per, per area, basically, that is required and, and plantings that are required, and they had met all of those standards when this was approved.
But there are shrubs specifically in this, in some capacity. There's.
There is a, there is a mix of plant material. I can't speak for this exact location, but along the right-of-way there is.
I don't know species, but yes, on that side there is. The only place we don't is on the opposite side of that, which is because the hardscape goes right up to it.
Okay, I understand. Okay. From my perspective, I don't think Building C necessarily meets the intent of foundation planting between the building on the sides, between that and the parking. Three palm trees doesn't seem like an eight-foot-wide planting strip. So similarly, how you've commented on Building E. It would seem Building C would also be subject to a similar concern. Regarding the buffer, it mentioned, when I was reviewing the documents, that it was required to have a certain number of overstory, understory, and shrubs.
That's the portion that was approved through the.
It's already been approved.
Yes, there was a certificate appropriateness that was, it was probably right before you joined the commission, because it was recently.
Yeah.
However, there was one for the overall development, the right-of-ways and things like that, that addressed all of the requirements for those overstory tree counts and things like that.
We, so the buffer requirements calculations have already been met through previous application?
Yes, yes.
Okay. One other question, or I've got so many. Their lighting plan that I saw in here, the light poles seem like they were in conflict with the trees that are being proposed in the landscape, but throughout the parking lot. It seemed like to be on top of or very, very close, which would render the light poles fairly useless once the tree canopy expanded. It would be beneficial to see those together on a, on a plan so that they were better coordinated. If I go out, this, we're banking on me calling out specific ones. I saw it in several locations. I can't find it.
If, if I may, if, if there are minimal items that you have, we're happy to look into them, just to, just to keep this meeting moving.
We have 15 minutes there.
And if you so choose, you can provide those to us. We're happy to, to look into them, you know, that are minor items, while the overall intent, our goal is to move forward with this, if it is to move forward with approval, approval with conditions, or to deny the request. So we would be looking from a staff level for direction as to what you're wanting to do.
Tableting is an option too, if that's the question, because they were looking for specific on the architecture. From my mind, our intent has always been to have it look like it's smaller buildings if it's not. And what I'm hearing from you, if I'm hearing right, is it doesn't look like.
Right, especially like Katie mentioned, Building D. I know that they've tried to break down the new Building B, but Building D, I think, needs a little more work on the massing and scale. So I'm going to say that, to make it more like the village versus a commercial strip center.
Okay, Commissioner.
So that's the massing of Building D.
Are there specific areas which do it well on Building D, or, or need, like, is there an area which I can point out to them that needs specific help?
Like, even if you combine, and I don't know which way you want to go with it, but even if you combined a couple of those other elements, instead of having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven elements, if, maybe if, you know, you've got the bigger piece on the left, maybe there's a bigger piece on the right, and it balances, and there's a connection in between. I don't know what the answer necessarily is with the architecture, but if there was something that was pushed or pulled.
Can I help? Why don't we just table it, and let us come back with something? We've heard you now. Listen, we will listen, we'll get back with the staff, and let's table it, and let's come back with these specific items on lighting and landscaping and everything. It'll be a better presentation next time, I promise you that.
Well, the other thing that I would like you to come back with, then, would be a roof plan, because the, some of these roofs are just, I'm, I'm having a hard time visually, like, I do this every day, so it, I, for me, it's difficult right now, understanding where certain things are stopping and starting. So if you could come back with a roof plan and maybe show where those units, and I know they're going to be in the middle. Kind of show an idea of where things would be, so I know where these parapets are stopping and starting, and.
Absolutely.
These different roofs are going.
Fairness to everybody's slate, and we'll table it, and we'll come back.
Okay, so then.
Hope the power's on next time.
I need to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Please go ahead, Katie.
Ms. Chairman, just briefly, before it is tabled, so that when they are bringing back this application, they have some direction, because we want it to be successful. What I am understanding from your conversations is that the landscaping on Buildings C and Building E, Building E will make sure that we've got that, the comprehensive plan for that area, just so that it's visible. But C, specifically on the right and left elevations, the light poles with the trees to ensure that they don't conflict, the HVAC locations slash a roof plans, we can better understand that. And then the massing specifically on Building D, perhaps combining several of these elements to balance the structure better and simplify the design so that it is fewer elements, but still not long and articulated. Is Building D the one that has the most challenge? Do we have other areas which should be looked at, or other areas which don't mess with, so that they can, can move with that direction?
I think D is the most challenged, because I know that they tried to break up the other ones. But if they, if you find something that works in Building D, carry it on.
Okay. So Building D.
Just don't want it to look like a completely, like, it doesn't go with anybody else. I want it all to be cohesive.
I think I have direction for that.
Can I ask a question? Say cohesive, but my sense is, staff probably helped them try to make this big building not look like a big building. And how far do they, do you want them to take it from this, which looks like a lot of little buildings? How far do they go?
Well, I don't, what I don't want it to look like, and I don't, I'm trying to be nice about some of these neighborhoods, is.
Be careful.
Yeah, materials just stuck on there, and I don't want it to look like materials are just stuck on there. They were there for a purpose. They made this building element, like, on more than just a face. Does that make sense? So maybe if it was articulated more, like, some things were pushed back more, and then the materials continued to show that this was an element, and not just this is the element.
I move that we table it for the time being, till the developer comes back to us with.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion?
Katie, I would also like to make sure that your comments that, that are in the staff report are also addressed as well.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, and Shay, I'll get in touch with you and text and, and everyone.
Madam Chairwoman, since we are at 9:20, y'all don't typically hear new items after 9:30 unless there's a vote, and we do have a number of items left remaining on our agenda. Unless there is anybody here who is in attendance because of public hearing on the 115 Bluffton Road annexation, or the 115 Bluffton Road zoning map amendment, out of mindfulness of the other applicants who are here on the Pediatric Smiles, Buckwalt Place Veterinary Clinic, Bluffton Assemblage, and the Godey Road rezoning request, i- if I may, Darby, do we have anybody who submitted public comment on the zoning map amendment for 115 Bluffton Road, or the annexation?
No, sir.
It's up to the planning commission, but you may want to consider just a motion to amend the agenda to move the two town and Bluffton applications to the very end.
Okay. Have a motion to amend the agenda to move number six and seven of new business to the end of the agenda.
Go move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Okay, so then, do we want to try and go ahead and do Pediatric Smiles?
Ma'am.
Okay. Talk fast, we'll, um.
I gotta confuse myself.
Oh, Matt, go.
You haven't done that for one or two.
Good thing you came tonight.
Approval of preliminary development plan, project consists of the. Approval of preliminary development plan. Project consists of the construction of an 8,000-square-foot building to serve as a dental medical office with associated parking and infrastructure. It is zoned Schultz Track PUD and consists of 1.06 acres, and it's a 291 Red Cedar. Will?
Okay, thank you. That was a good introduction. Again, this is for an 8,000-square-foot commercial building to be used as a dental office with additional space available for rent for retail use. Give a quick location. There we go. Just for location purposes, this is Red Cedar Street at the intersection of Bluffton Parkway. For those of you familiar, here's Red Cedar Elementary School. This is the large storage facility across the street. Here's a site plan. We worked with the applicant during some pre-application meetings to make sure, because this is in a unique location, to make sure that they provided a plan where architecturally, they could address the Parkway, which they are required to do per the, the master plan and the design guidelines that were placed on this lot, but also that it's a unique situation because it gains access off of a private drive that cuts through to Persimmon Street. So, they were able to do that, as you can see. They provided all their required parking per the Schultz Track PUD and the Bluffton Park master plan. Here you can see the tree, the, the tract is mostly planted pines, as is pretty much all of the Schultz Track PUD. And here, they've provided a concept landscape plan that they will satisfy all the requirements of the POA. And just to go back, a little bit of history, the concept, the, the landscape plan that, that you saw, that we just showed, is a conceptual plan. They've also provided conceptual plans for lighting. Neither of those are required at the time of preliminary. We just asked them to provide them, so that you can see their intent. Also know that they will be provided, they will be required, and they've already provided a conditional letter of approval of the ARB and the Bluffton Park POA, and final approval will be required before we would release their final development permit. So, as with any preliminary development plan, there are six criteria that we review. Again, you can see approval of the local POA is required. No additional traffic requirements or road improvements are required per the original traffic impact analysis. All improvements were made to Red Cedar or prior. All utilities will be provided, will be constructed in a single phase, and we have determined that the application is complete. So, tonight, you can approve this application as it's submitted, approve it with conditions, table it, or deny the application. Staff is recommending that you approve the application as it was submitted. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and we have the applicant here as well.
The applicant want to speak? Briefly, no, Dan, just a couple words. You're a man of his word.
He's always talking so much.
Thank you very much for having us. Dan Kiefer, Whitmer James Kiefer, and Jason Broni, Corackus Architects. We're here to answer any questions.
That was brief.
I have one question. Where's the trash service?
They're gonna, as of now, there's gonna be rollout bins located at the back of the building.
Is that what that, in the corner is over here?
The
Sidewalk by it.
There's a backdoor entrance, then a sidewalk that accesses all the buildings. So, it'll be at the back of the building is where they'd be located.
That southwest corner, where the, it looks, it looks like it might be a service area, I just
Yeah, actually, that's, that's an entry point, and then, parallel or in line with that, there's a, there's a service yard in line with that. I don't know if I can move a mouse.
So, we can point?
Right, yeah.
The tree plant actually shows the
Yeah, go to the
Yeah, and
More pages.
That's
There.
There, right there.
Definitely one of those items as we proceed with final drawings.
Can you show us?
Get update to that.
Or help come show us where on there, with that.
And then, what's the use for that future space and that lease space? What's the idea of what those might entail, potentially? The sky's the limit.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
So, if they had, if they had greater trash service needs than the dentist office, that might necessitate something larger, is that something of concern, or that we can, that we would even be addressing at this point?
As of now, it would be private service, so they would have, they would basically have their bin, that would be, maybe just be this frequency of service, as far as the individual tenant goes.
Good half of a building that, of undefined use, that, I mean, I can understand dentist office is not a restaurant, so is there a limit of the uses that could be in those spaces, that might dictate what it could be that, in terms of level of trash, that would be associated with that?
I mean, as of now, it's retail, office. There's other uses that could be, we don't, we don't know at this point.
But is it zoned for, like, restaurant, or anything like that?
Right, that's, that's kind of, I mean
Yeah, it's, it's not set up, doesn't have parking and the structure for
I guess that's the point, is it couldn't be a restaurant.
The parking that's provided was for office retail.
Office retail only.
Yeah, restaurant would be a much higher intense use.
I think that's what we're trying to get at, is make sure that, like, it's just office retail, not, we don't know what that's going to be, but office retail.
Yeah, we can certainly clarify that as, with staff along the way, is if we, the uses get defined, and we need to add that, we could certainly look at adding a dumpster or accommodating other uses. So, we could ask that question, the client, and
The only other comment I had was just, just look at your plant list. I'm concerned about the deer food, because I know there's a lot of deer out here, so that's, and I think you're professional enough to know.
You're welcome.
Any else? All right, entertain a motion.
We approve, approve as submitted.
Second?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. 9:29, it's 9:30.
I got 9:30 on there.
What do we do now?
Given that it is 9:30, this next agenda item, let's, let's go ahead and do a motion from the Planning Commission to continue to hear, hear these items as y'all, as y'all see fit. The next one is the Buckwalter Place Veterinary Clinic, but if you want to do a motion to continue to hear these items.
I may have a motion to continue to hear the items on the agenda. Because it is 9:30. Motion? No motion?
And if I may, we do have, I'm mindful of y'all's time, I'm also mindful of the people who have been here for
Twice, yeah.
Three, three and a half hours, waiting to have their application heard. Bellman Associates, Daniel Iyer, and Mr. J.C. Fraser. Or the rezoning and the So, there was
The which two, the, the next two we had, or the number nine and number 11?
Number six and number seven both had to be publicly noticed under the South Carolina Code, 30 days' advance notice. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask
Staff would respectfully request that you continue the items that are, are on the agenda.
Including six and seven?
Including all the items, yes.
Okay. Yeah, can we, can we take a three-minute recess?
You can take a five-minute recess if you'd like.
How many minutes do we need, people? Can we have five minutes?
Do a motion, motion for a recess.
May I have a motion for a recess?
A motion for recess.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're in recess. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in recess.
Minutes is up.
We were talking about business.
I have to, what do I do now?
I just gabble us back in.
Back in session, recess is over.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may, again, Richardson LaBruce from Finger Melonick Brooks and LaBruce. Here, talking to y'all about the remaining items on our agenda, again, we are well after 9:30. And to be mindful of your time, the applicant's time, and also the investment that the town has done into the public notice, one thing I would remind y'all that you have the ability to consider is holding a special meeting for the remaining items on this agenda. I understand that we have the applicants here for items number nine, 10, and 11. That being said, we do have the two Bluffton items that have been publicly noticed for public hearing, and it is, if they are not heard tonight, they are likely going to have to be, they may have to be re-noticed, we'll have to look into that, and that will delay the, you know, the annexation and the zoning map amendment. And I believe there's been a workshop on that item anyways before planning commission, maybe two months ago.
Correct.
So it has been a matter that has been discussed in some detail, but are y'all, do you have a, is there a preference, one way or another? I'm just trying to make sure that we figure out what, how to, how to schedule the rest of this evening.
And if I may, the, and just the, so you understand ramifications with the planning workshop item for Mr. Frazier. So that is, it is programmed to go, come back to you in November, the November 17th meeting, as a, as a public hearing. As you know, we are required to post notifications 30 days prior to the public hearing. So if we do not hold the workshop, which is a required requirement, we then can't hold the public hearing, which then causes the chain reaction of, of more incurred cost for him to continue to move forward.
But if we have a special meeting on the 10th, then it still fits that timeframe, right?
I'll look, I'll look into it, but we may be able to post the notice even if we haven't had that, the workshop, so that the, you know, the notice is running concurrently with the workshop. I will, I might have to look into that, I apologize, I've never been asked that question before.
Kevin gonna be mad? Okay, what is everybody's consensus?
Always talk first, I'm gonna listen this time.
I'm looking at Matt.
I'm looking at you guys. Well, and to the, again, to the extent of matters, and obviously, I know y'all have had a busy night already, it is absolutely staff's position to, to continue to move forward with these items, and try to, try to address as many of them as we can this evening.
Well, I can say this much to the rest of the commission, you're gonna get buried in item number 10.
And can we pick and choose which ones, and try and get done by 10 o'clock, or no, that's not how that works?
Well, I, I think you-
I bet you can plow through the rest unless somebody has issues with them, and I'm just being honest, that's one that, that-
That's the biggest one.
Is gonna need protracted conversation.
You, I can, I can speak with the applicant, but I believe that would be acceptable. I mean, it's, it's, again, it's after 9:30, it's on the agenda that any item after 9:30, y'all can decline to hear it and just amend the agenda to put that one at the very end. I mean, we can, we can manage that.
So would we still need to do a special meeting to address the rest, or no?
That, if it is a, if it's a big issue, and it's one that's gonna be heavily discussed, I would recommend that. Again, it's being mindful of the applicant's time and the applicant's calls, they've been here this evening, and that would be putting them off another 30 days, I think, if we could schedule a me, a special meeting.
Special meeting, okay. All right, so then let's get a motion to amend the agenda to continue with item nine and 11?
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Unless somebody's got, like Kathleen, you had issues with it before, if somebody thinks we're gonna get bogged down in one of these, then-
I'm concerned about six and seven, and I'm concerned about 10. Nine and 11, I'm far-
But if we postpone six and seven, then we're gonna be not-
No, if we meet on the 10th, it's still, because you've 30-day noticed it already.
But not six and seven?
Well, if you haven't 30-day noticed-
What's today, today's?
So we, we have 30-day noticed six and seven for a hearing to occur this evening. And so that is, there's the public hearing, and then this matter, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, is going before town council on, are these going before-
Not until December.
December, okay, but even scheduled for December, we'd have to put out a new 30-day notice, and that would be-
Well, the, the, the new notice will be the, at the second, second final. So if you so choose, if you decide to hold a special meeting, my request would be to, to open the, open the public hearing, and then continue it until the specific date, and then that way we can continue it at that point, it's still open, and then it doesn't, the first reading wouldn't go to town council until December, and then the second reading is not programmed to go until February.
So we go ahead and open public hearing for six and seven? Then what happens?
So it sounds like staff's recommendation, and I, I agree with it, is to go ahead and let's continue this meeting until a date certain, and basically postpone consideration of these agenda items until a date certain, which will be a special meeting to be held next week, I'm gathering, or two weeks?
Have to be next Wednesday, because two weeks is our regular mission, meeting, isn't it?
No.
No, 17th.
17th is the next.
Which is two weeks.
Yep.
So it would have to be next Wednesday.
Could it be a different day than a Wednesday?
It can-
Have to be Wednesday? Can it be sooner?
Make it a Friday.
About Friday at 5:00.
Next Tuesday is council, so we can't do it then, but other than-
And I'm, I'm deferring to Kevin and Darby and the members of the planning committee, the planning staff here, the growth management department, to make sure that, you know, there's an opening here for that date, and then obviously that all of your schedules can accommodate.
To my knowledge, it's only town council on next Tuesday, that would be a 6:00 meeting.
It's open, it's open.
Wednesday's open, is that right?
Yeah. Again, I would, my, my request is for, is the workshop item, if we could, if we could just hear that one this evening, for Mr. Frazier, again, he's waited a long time for this one.
Okay.
And I do understand everyone else has waited a long time as well for these items.
Well, I think we could do nine as well, with the veterinary, don't you guys? I mean, it's-
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and do nine and 11, and then we're gonna postpone the others, and we'll be okay with the six and seven.
Public hearing.
So what we'll do is, go ahead and we'll hear, hear number nine, hear number 11, and then continue the meeting until what's sounding like next Wednesday, and we'll get that date, we'll get everything wrapped up, and I'll, I'll prepare a motion for y'all.
But that does not mess us up with six and seven?
Let me, let me prepare a motion for y'all, and if y'all wanna start on number nine.
Okay.
You wanna read the agenda, or you want me to just-
All right, I don't need to make, well, I guess we're still in order, okay. So Buck Walter Place Veterinary Clinic.
I'm sorry, point of order, do we need to make a motion to continue?
I, I think we're fine, let's just, let's just move on.
I called us back after recess.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to.
For approval of preliminary development plan, 9,000 square foot veterinary clinic with associated utilities, parking, and infrastructure of the property zone Buck Walter planned unit development and consists of .710 acres located within Buck Walter Place master plan.
Okay, thank you, you've taken care of my first slide. So staff has worked with the applicant on several pre-application meetings to come up with site planning on this very oddly shaped parcel. We actually reviewed comments of the DRC at the September 1st meeting of the DRC, a few revisions were required, staff, the applicant provided those revisions, and have provided a site plan that meets all of our requests. Again, this is in Buck Walter Place, this is formerly known as Lot 6 of Buck Walter Place, just for reference, this building here is the Southern Barrel, which many, and this larger building down is the Station 300. Buck Walter Place Boulevard goes into the multifamily development Mystic Bluff, EviCorps is across the street there. Again, here's the, the overall master plan, what we're looking at here is Building C, identified on this master plan as future development. So again, this was an oddly shaped parcel, worked with the applicant, one of the unique situations was, as a veterinary hospital, they needed a rehabilitation yard for dogs after surgery, and locating that and getting the parking was a little difficult, so what we came up with was closing the access, there was a curb cut planned right here, we closed that so that we could place the building and the rehabilitation yard, and then gained primary access down here, coming from the adjacent parking lot with access here off of Buck Walter Place Boulevard, exit to Buck Walter Place Boulevard one way. All, the applicant was able to provide all the necessary parking, dumpster enclosure, landscaping, using previous papers, as you can see, and they will be required to obtain full approval of the Buck Walter Place ARB. The, the plan is currently under review with them, but it will, we will require their approval letter prior to final approval and issue of the development permit. As with the other preliminary plan, there are six criteria, this plan in the, in the Buck Walter PUD, not subject to Article 5 of, of the UDO. We talked about abandoning the curb cut, an encroachment permit for that abandonment and the additional sidewalk connection, that encroachment permit will be required and issued from the Town of Bluffton, and again, they'll also be able to, they're also required to provide that letter from the POA. No additional road improvements are required, all utilities are available, this will be constructed in a single phase, and the application has been determined to be complete. So you can either approve, approve with conditions, table, or deny this application, and staff is recommending that we approve it as it's submitted. I'm available for questions, we have the engineer of record here as well.
Would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, I'm Elick Metzger with E- good night.
Not even him anymore.
EMC Engineering, so the only thing I'd really like to add is, so Dr. Daniel has a vet office already in Buck Walter Place, he, he rents or leases that facility, he purchased this property, I guess, last year, early this year, so he's just, since he's not a developer, he's going through the process, trying to figure out, you know, what'll fit, can he fit his new vet clinic here and make it work and stay in the community. Be glad to answer any questions, thank you.
Wait first, anybody down here?
I have a couple of questions, comments, and it may be more staff-related. Well, is there any kind of, where that angled parking is that comes along that one-way? Are they required to have a walkway along there at all?
I'm, what, I think I know where you're talking about.
Just south of that Beaufort Jasper water, along there?
No, they're not required to have any pedestrian connection there, the only place that I might say is, as an after, might wanna put a connection maybe right through these shrubs, but there's no requirement from the PUD or the, I mean, if you look at the remainder of the parking areas in Buck Walter Place, not every parking space is connected via a sidewalk.
Yeah, I'd love to see a connection there if possible, just to minimize the amount of pedestrians. The, as you continue around that one-way, past the dumpster, just past the two spaces, it angles back and then runs parallel to the property line, it, it starts to make it feel like you could use that as an extra parking space, and I-
Where's that?
Right here, in that little nook.
I was just wondering if that's too tight, anyway, to have, there's two spaces that-
It feels awkward, and I have a feeling people are gonna end up parking in that space and then parking partly-
I'm not sure, I know where you're-
Yeah, I think they got weird.
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah, 'cause if somebody parks there, then it's tight.
Yeah, I mean, that could just be, have like a gore or striping painted there, isn't-
Yeah.
Yeah. The sign at the entrance, where the two A is, one of the thoughts I had was that as you enter the prop, I wondered if maybe the sign, like you have a little kind of entrance sign there, but you actually put your signage for the property up closer to where you're gonna come in off of the Buck Walter Place Boulevard, I wondered if it may be better relocated.
That will be approved, that location would be approved through a signed permit, and we'll work with the ARB on where they want the sign placed.
Okay, and then the only other thought I had was just encouraging the applicant to address Buck Walter Place Boulevard in some capacity with the architecture. I understand the primary interest is off the-
And again, the ARB is, is gonna make sure that, that all that is, they'll, they'll provide architectural review.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else?
I'm assuming you can't punch that parking through to Buck Walter Place?
No, because it, it's, it's too close to the existing access, and we discussed it with town engineer, director of engineering, and it, it wouldn't meet any, you know, we kinda like to mirror the requirements of the arms manual, and it would be way too close to have two access points that close together, it'd be conflicting.
May I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Ellen.
The next item up is, we're gonna go to item number 11, Gothy Road rezoning request.
We need to make a motion to modify the agenda and to move item 10 down.
And that's what Commissioner Wetmore was speaking to earlier, that, you know, ideally, yes, let's, let's go ahead and do that, because we had had such discussions about it beforehand, but let's go ahead and just clarify.
Well, I need-
Motion to amend the agenda to take on item number 11.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're officially on item 11, Gothy Road rezoning request, request by J.C. Frazier Jr. for approval of an amendment to Town of Bluffton official zoning map to rezone two parcels from residential general to neighborhood core, the subject parcels consist of approximately 1.24 and are identified by the tax map number in your packet, located northwest of the intersection of Hildrebrand Road and Gothy Road. Kevin?
Great, thank you, and thank you all for continuing to, to be here, I know it's very difficult right now. So this evening is no vote, so this is a workshop, as I was referring to earlier, part of the process that we have is any type, there's, anytime there's a rezoning, we do require a workshop, and then this item will be back in front of you in two weeks as a public hearing. So this is a request by Mr. Frazier, who has patiently been waiting in the audience, he's been patiently waiting for quite a few years for this to move forward, so he is requesting to rezone the two parcels that we've been discussing, from residential general to neighborhood core. Currently, that residential general is regulated by the UDO, which allows for single-family residential uses, up to four units per acre, and very limited number of commercial uses, daycare facility is, is one item, however, restaurants not allowed. So he is proposing to rezone these two properties, I did provide a, a brief timeline for you, and I'm just gonna kinda go through this quickly, Mr. Frazier's father, Mr. Frazier Senior, you know, received the property in 62, they constructed the building that is currently, currently there in 1964, again, was designated as general purpose building, so it was built as a commercial building, they operated a restaurant at that location, which closed in 1969. In 1981, the town enacted their first zoning, which zoned it a residential use, and was not permitted to reestablish his commercial use in 84. It says Beaufort County does not, denies zoning variance to open store across from MC Riley, and she noted, again, that what is now the MC Riley Sports Complex used to be MC Riley School. In 1991, Mr. Frazier requested a rezoning of his property from residential to that mixed use two, and it was denied, based on the recommendations provided by Beaufort County staff, which was providing planning services for the town, back then, there was no planning staff, and that there, it lacked adequate infrastructure to handle the uses allowed in that district. Then in 1993, the town council approves the rezoning request for that mixed use to development, or classification. In 92, Mr. Frazier received his business license to open Kitty's Snack Shop, and then again, in 96, the business license from the town to operate the restaurant. In 2001, 2002, the town rezones the property to that residential, general residential, along with the annexation, rezoning of other properties along Gothy Schultz. In 90, 2016, town party, town attorney states that the use of the restaurant is not allowed since the property owner had abandoned the legal conforming use for that period for one year or more. I'm sorry, I skipped the one part up here, it says that the town, in 2002, that the town provided a determination that the owner had vested rights as that mixed use development at that time. And then in 2016 is where we stated that, that the, that the use had, since had not been in operation, the owner had banned that legal nonconforming use for a period of one year or more. And then in September of this year, staff met with Mr. Frazier onsite to discuss the use of a restaurant that's not being allowed since it was an abandoned use, excuse me, that, we met for a pre-application meeting to discuss the next steps for him to submit this application, and then he submitted his application the next day for that rezoning request. So again, this workshop is meant to be an informal opportunity for you to talk with the applicant, you know, notifications were provided to, if you have any questions, and if there's any items that you so choose to use, I did provide the review criteria in your staff report, not necessarily provided any findings, because it's more for discussion purposes. Also, just some reference documents, I provided a copy of the growth framework map, which this property does follow, fall under that Village Place type, provided a copy of the Gothy Schultz Plan, where it talks about comprehensive strategies for revitalizing the neighborhood in order to promote more healthy and sustainable community and increase economic competitiveness. So I would like, if, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to start and answer them, but I prefer if Mr. Frazier could come up and then just give us some, some background information, and then if you have questions for him, for the property purposes, he can answer them, and for technical items, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Frazier?
Ding and good night. Okay, my thing is, I live in Bluffton, I've been here since 1963 on that property over there, that's where my family property was. So my dad got his leg cut off in 1963, Long Showman in Savannah, five kids, he built that place when he got his money, which-
He built that place when he got his money, which you didn't get that much money back then, excuse me, being a black man. You got your leg cut off, and what he got, he took it, and he built my mother a restaurant because she loved to cook, and she was cooking in Michael C. Riley's school. So, they had the place open, skipped the Michael C. Riley's school, the cafeteria burnt down, classroom burnt down. So, even though we were running the restaurant, my dad let the school came and use it, and they turned it into the school cafeteria. After they built it back, when we went to open up, we were denied to get the permit to open back up again. And the two classrooms that burnt down, after they ate lunch, those same tables were the teachers in there teaching classroom. I don't think it was fair, well, what could you do back then? We can't open it if we don't have a town permit, so the building have sit there, and it was just like, you know, deserted, if you wanna call it that. But guess what? I'm educated. I went to school here. This here was my detention hall, coming over here to integrate the school, and we used to come in here for detention, 'cause I'm always in fights. Skip that, but I'm back to Michael C. Riley. Yeah, I remember this school. Okay, so all I'm saying is, I have a brother that's a chef, Ronnie, cook for Tide Point Calabogie Cafe. He has a daughter Tina, right now, running Cantor Field over here on 170. He have a son in Columbia, a chef. And I'm like, wow, we got all these chefs in the family. I cook for all kind of things too, and we have a building just sit over there, and just sit over there, and say, I came from Atlanta in 1982. I had black hair, and I was still fighting trying to get this place open. When does it stop? Whatever the reason is, I watched Calhoun Street closed down. Those were residential homes. I've been over here fighting to get my residential property turned back to commercial, and you done closed Calhoun Street. All those houses, people used to live in it, 'cause I had to walk there from Calhoun to come here. And now, those are shops, little restaurants, and all of this over there. But what about poor little old me, sitting over here on Gothy Road? The building is 30 feet wide by 90 long, and to me, my daddy lost a leg. He went to work one evening, and like you walk and leave a leg behind, the crane is unloading steel beams, and the chain popped, and it came down and cut his leg off. That's why that building means so much to me, okay? My father dead and gone, used to sit out there and watch me working on that place, trying to revive it, trying to get it open. My daddy used to apply, trying to get it open, and got denied. I've been applying and got denied. I went to Denmark Tech, I'm the town tailor. I used to sew for Bluffton Police Department. Everybody used to come over there for me, for alteration, but I'm just saying, and I'm looking at this building, and it hurt my heart. My son 47 years old, I wanna pass something down to him. I got grandkids 21 years old, you know, so what I'm gonna leave them? That's why I'm fighting. If I get it open, I can get them in there and teach them. Don't have to go on a job and work. You can also own a business and run it, and that's gonna be my legacy, what I leave to them. And sometimes it's hard for me to speak in front of people, 'cause, you know, that bass come up in my voice, and people get, take it the wrong way, but that's how I express myself. So, I hope you all reconsider, this ain't 1970, 63, no. This is 2021? I've been waiting a long time, watching over here, when they cut, Doc, what is it? Dr. Mallencamp Drive? I know when Palmetto State Bank was a trailer. I said, Kitty, my mother, you gonna go round there one day, and that trailer gonna be gone with all your money. It wasn't no road. That road got cut through here because the school bus had killed a young boy one time at Michael C. Riley's schoolyard. So, Aunt Polly, who owned that whole script, where they got all them townhouses, gave property to cut the road through there, so the kids wouldn't be in the road, the school bus in the road, and kids walking. So, that's how the roads got cut through, and the restaurant was there, and we still not open. I see all those restaurants, what's that?
Promenade.
Mallencamp, I mean, Metara, Metara, across from Palmetto State Bank, the I Shop, even Larry Toma Restaurant. None of that was there, and I've been still fighting trying to get this restaurant open. And I stand up and I look, Gothy Road was a little narrow dirt road, and look at it now, they got townhouses all the way down. And guess what? I'm still there waiting. I told these fellas, I say, I ain't got this for nothing. I got it 'cause I got patience, and I believe in my God, okay? And I trust God, and all I can do is wait, and it's in your hands to make that decision on whether my little building turn back to a restaurant one day. And then all y'all can come over there and see how good I can cook and bake. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I wish he was like first on the agenda.
So, did the Town of Bluffton turn your hair gray?
I kinda do, actually.
Did the Town of Bluffton turn your hair gray?
No, I lived long enough.
Developers need to listen to a story.
I'm 67 years old.
Getting started.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you, Mr. Frazier. Again, you know, this item's gonna be back in front of you at the November 17th meeting as a public hearing. We've obviously done all of our notifications, the sign is out in front of his property, we put the notices in the newspaper. So, we will have this back in front of you. In, in the interest of time, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them offline, you know, and if you have questions for Mr. Frazier, I'm happy to get those to him ahead of time, and what we'll do is we'll just bring this back to you. Unless you have any specific questions as of right now, again, the goal is to go from that zoning designation of the residential general to the neighborhood core, not in the historic district. So, this property is not in the historic district. So, just to make sure that's clear, so.
I have one question, which I hope is quick. No, we can discuss further on the offline. The, I was wondering, obviously, he was given exemption previously when it was zoned residential general to allow it to operate as a restaurant. I understand it didn't function, it was longer than a year where it sat and didn't get used as such, and that's why he lost that special-
Designation.
Designation. Is there no path for him to reapply for that speci- special designation?
There, there's not. It's, it's a legal, legal nonconforming use, and you have, you have, from the day that that use, you know, is, is, closes, you have a window to reopen or reestablish it, but once you go beyond that window, you can't reestablish a use that's no longer allowed.
When was that window created? Was that around his, like, did he know that back then?
I-
That's what I'm saying is-
I can't, I can't tell, I, I mean, I can't, I can't answer for-
The window was created after.
2002, so.
One more, one more question. The property to, just to the south of it, was, has anybody talked to that property about potentially rezoning as a part of-
That's Nancy, Nancy Bruin, who she's passed away, but the son-
I, they, they showed, I got it, but I talked to, taxes won't go up.
Now, that's not to say that in the future, if they choose to, to rezone the property, then they potentially could do that as well. They had similar situation where their property did have that, that, that mixed use zoning designation on it as well.
I wanna say I'm sympathetic to your cause, and I would love, I would love to help. I'm just, there's some concerns I have, and I just, I wanna remove impediments as much as possible, 'cause I, I hear you, and you are somebody who's obviously been around here for a very long time, making very substantial contributions to the Town of Bluffton, serving as the cafeteria, so I just say that, I want that, you to, you to know that specifically, so.
Kevin, just a question. You've said notifications, it sounds like you talked to the other neighbors. Is that process, we'll hear more about, are there any concerns of neighbors or notifications? Will we hear that at the next meeting, or have you not received anything?
To date, I have not received anything. Obviously, with the, you know, the timeframe coming up on the 17th, we'll continue to, if we, if we receive anything prior to the meeting, but then, you know, people could potentially show up at the meeting, 'cause it is a, a public hearing, so I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know if, you know, if anyone's gonna show up or not.
Just a follow-up, if you show that slide where the plot was, back couple slides, yellow. So, can any of those lots apply for this same designation?
Could they? Yes, any, anyone could apply.
Yep.
Anyone could apply to, to, to rezone their property, absolutely. Is it appropriate? Not necessarily. It's on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, for, for Mr. Frazier, because of the fact that his property was previously roan, previously zoned a mixed use, has a commercial building on it, he stands ground to, to have a, a better case than someone that has a vacant piece of property that is nowhere close, embedded in the middle of a residentially zoned district.
Is that the reason that the town's considering a spot zoning applicable in this case only?
Yes, yes, and it's not necessary, I wouldn't call it the spot zoning, but I would call it that, the fact that it's, it's, you know, it is formerly a residentially, or excuse me, formerly a commercially zoned property, and, you know, that designation had changed, and then the goal is to bring it back to that commercial designation.
And I am also sympathetic to Mr. Frazier's situation. I just, again, worry about how we could say yes to that and no to future ones without running into legal issues. That's my only concern.
Well, and if, if I may, I've had an opportunity to, to look into Mr. Frazier's application, as you can tell from the package, as early as 2016, and it, it really, it really is the convergence of a bunch of unique circumstances with a use that had been authorized for a very long time. As part of the annexation into the town, there was a zoning map amendment that would have made that use, or made that use nonconforming, but it continued forward, he had vested rights, and then for, you know, a variety of reasons, it, the use was stopped for a limited period of time. Around it, as you can see from the, you know, the, is that fuchsia color underneath Hildrebrand? Gothy Road, I mean, that, that's what is, that's what they're seeking to change, to rezone this property to. It's consistent historically with the, the use of that property. Spot zoning has some very defined limitations, and when a decision's made for planning commissioner town councils, this goes through, we'll certainly be able to look more into those particular issues, but each, each application's unique. Each application for a rezoning request, you have to, you have the criteria you're gonna consider, and obviously, it's not a, this is a workshop item at the moment, but that's something that we'll try to detail heavily for you, to make sure that you're not concerned that you're doing something you're not legally authorized to do, but also that you're not creating a situation where any individual landowner can come in and request whatever zoning they may want. And again, it's, you have this, kind of, again, this unique influence of factors, where you have M.C. Riley across the street, so you, the zoning designation is-
Residential general.
Residential general, despite it being, you know, the ball field, and just the promenade across the way. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of interesting factors and unique factors for this particular piece that we'll, we'll more fully develop for y'all.
Well, if I may, I mean, I look at it as there's a historical context here. This is not, maybe there's another one in town, but I doubt it. Back and forth so many times, so that, that gives me a peace of mind if we do decide as a body to do this, that there isn't gonna be a line of people behind Mr. Frazier saying, I wanna do it too.
Well, my, the, even to that point, and I understand the intent is to keep it in the family to operate it as a restaurant. If it's ever sold, the opportunities of what you could do on that property adjacent to all this residential general may not be appropriate, and that's one of the concerns I have specifically with the spot zoning. Now, as you said, with that neighborhood core being right adjacent to it, if I can get that property to the south, I feel a lot better about it, 'cause then it's more justified.
Absolutely.
One other question I have for you, Mr. Frazier. I think I saw on an aerial or street view, there's a driveway that goes to the back, and it looks like there's several buildings in the back. Am I correct in what I saw with that?
On my property?
On your property, yes.
Yeah, you've got, you've got a trailer behind the, the building right now.
That's what I live in.
So, there's, so there's, there's, okay, so then you're, you've got a particular vested interest in making sure, making sure that access is maintained, 'cause one of the concerns I have with this being operated as a restaurant was people parking and then blocking access to the back, to the rear of the property.
No, I'm supposed to make for you.
Yeah, that's-
One way come in and go back around the building.
Yeah, that would all be picked up during a, a development plan.
Okay.
And that will come back to you.
All right. See it a couple times. Great. Is there any action we have to do, or that was it?
No action, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good, and we'll be back on the 17th.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Impatient.
So, go ahead.
So, what we, you know, what we need to do here is a little bit of an unusual motion, because we have, again, matters that need to be heard, public hearing-wise. This is a type of motion I'm not all that familiar with, to be, to be quite honest, but under Robert's rules, what we need to do is essentially continue this meeting and pick it up again on November 10th, when you say November 10th at 6:00 P.M.
Well, you, you were asking to not do it on a Wednesday, is that-
Well, I, I didn't know if there was any time sooner, is what I was getting at, like, it, it had to be Wednesday, or could it be a different date, but if that's the only date available?
Well, this Thursday was open originally, I don't know if that's-
Just, just as a, just to give you guys some additional information, is that we have this evening's meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow night, we also have a meeting on Wednesday night, so from a staff level, yes.
By Thursday?
I know, we're like teachers, you know, we have no, we have no personal life. We only stay at work, so.
Can we come in earlier?
That's something that staff could potentially look into if, if that is, if that is your request.
Madam Chair, do you, do you have a, do you have a recommendation? Would you prefer that we, we come in earlier?
We have one commissioner that works in Rankin. Planning, planning director for Rankin.
Um, then, I guess we have to-
So, what I'm gonna recommend that we do is, it's called a motion to fix the time to which to adjourn, which means that we're, after we adjourn this meeting-
We'll figure it out.
It is going to basically continue it until November 10th at 6:00 P.M. So, what I'd like to do is, is to state the motion, and then if y'all in agreement, just have someone say, so moved. It's probably the simplest way to do it.
Go ahead, state the motion.
So, a motion to fix the time to which to adjourn, so that when we adjourn, we adjourn to meet on Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, at 6:00 P.M. For the purposes of hearing items six, seven, and 10, as stated in the original agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Now we, now you can adjourn the meeting.
Now can we adjourn the meeting? May I have a motion?
I motion we adjourn the meeting.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.